Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Special Meeting and Regular Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At special meetings, the council takes formal action on special items and during the workshops, only discusses issues with no formal action taken. Agenda packets are available on City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV, channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, may I get a roll call, please?
Yes, council members, Brown.
Here.
Campos.
Present.
Milm.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protan Maloney.
Present.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present. And with that, if you would please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every human justice world.
Thank you for that. And with that, we move on to item four, unfinished business for a resolution, purchase of property for Zone Three Reservoir Storage Tank, Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. You may remember this item. The staff has been before council several times related to the Zone Three Water Storage Reservoir. We came to you early on with a design-build contract, which we are currently under. We also came to you with a Phase One agreement for the design and the establishment of the guaranteed maximum price. We also came with an early acquisition for some pipe related to it because of some issues related to the time it takes for delivery. And so this item is to finalize a purchase and sale agreement that the council approved back in October of last year. And we are now finally able to get the subdivision that created the lot that we needed from the property owner. The short plaid is complete. Now this is the resolution to execute the final agreement for the purchase of the property.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Any comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 4231 authorizing the purchase of 1.89 acres located at 541 Dent Road, Pasco, Washington, for the construction of the Zone Three Reservoir Storage Tank.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor say aye.
Madam Mayor and council, we've asked Cameron Fordmire from Greater Columbia Behavioral Health to give us an overview of the behavioral health resources in this community. Council asked us about a month ago what were all the different firms and agencies out there and what services did they offer, and there's quite a selection. Cameron has quite a history. He was involved in original MHP programs with the city, so he's got a lot of street knowledge. And he's also been doing a lot of instructing with Pasco Fire over the last year in how we help respond to the changes in mental health crisis that's been forced on the police departments. And he's been a real asset. So with that, Cameron, thank you.
Thank you. So with those a fine introduction, I have my name, my name is Cameron Fordmire. I've lived in the Tri-Cities my entire life. Twenty-one of those years have been in direct service in Benton Franklin County in behavioral health. And so the first thirteen of that was in direct care and the last eight has been in some form of administration. And so currently I'm with Greater Columbia Behavioral Health as the regional administrator for the Recovery Navigator Program, and I also have my own business awareness consulting and training that I'm the owner and operator of. So like Chief Gear said, the purpose of this is to give a brief overview of what are the resources currently, who is providing what specialty services, look at some of the outreach, look at the gaps in our current system, and how we can hopefully fill those and maybe some next course of action for that. So I won't death by PowerPoint you, but you can see on here and maybe recognize some of the existing providers in here. All these providers provide some form of outpatient therapy or med management with some of the other forms like Grace Clinic specializing in people who are uninsured, individuals with no benefits whatsoever will be able to go there. Lord's Counseling Center has our psychiatric inpatient unit, also has the procedural diversion program, which is a complement to Mental Health Court, serving those who have been found incompetent. Where Mental Health Court has typically served those who are, have either been found competent, understand court proceedings. Lutheran, as you can see on there, is primarily a child adolescent service, so they provide Swift and Wise. We'll talk a little bit more about that going forward. But that is outreach for youth that are Medicaid eligible, who need some wraparound services, services to include family, schools, provide some live life experience peers as well. So moving on to United Family Center, those providers at United Family Center are also in the school. They have eighty percent of their staff over there is bilingual. And so we put a lot of people who are either monolingual over there, but Spanish speaking is their primary and specialty over there. Somerset Counseling, Recovery and Wellness, specialized in substance abuse. And Three Verse Therapy is our provider, who is also doing the Recovery Navigator Program. For those of you that are familiar with the Blake Decision, when they made small possession decriminalized, they had to, state had to put out some outreach to go with that. You couldn't just hand them a card and say, here's a referral, you need a live body, and so they will come out on hand. And then Comprehensive down there at the end, as of April tenth of this year, they took over crisis services from Lord's. And so that is where the designated crisis responders are at. Their home base right there behind, across from CBC over there is there, but they're gonna get a new location in Tri-City soon. And so they'll have a standalone crisis center drop-off area as well. Moving along from this one, Ideal Balance is primarily for your MAT treatment. And so anybody with medication-assisted treatment, they do that, and that's their behavioral health side of there. Like I said, I'm not gonna death by PowerPoint you, we'll get into kind of the nuts and bolts of this on what we're doing for our community members. So for those of us that have loved ones, friends, family, anybody who's in crisis and needs somebody on scene, we have a couple different options for them. And so we stated previously, Comprehensive has taken over for the designated crisis responder services. So anybody who is needing ITA, which is the Involuntary Treatment Act, if I do too many acronyms, raise and ask, and I'll do that, because in our world, that's all we talk about is PDP, OCD, so on and so on. So, but the DCRs are the designated crisis responders. They're the only individuals in Washington State who can assess for involuntary psychiatric hospitalization. So currently, we have access to them, but there is only three DCRs on at a given time, sometimes four, and that's covering all of Benton Franklin County. And so even though we have that service, there are plenty of individuals who either do not meet the criteria for detention, but are still in crisis and still needing some form of services. And so when you look at the statistics of this, only ten percent of, and it never goes higher than twenty percent of those evaluations result in detention. So you're arguably eighty percent of the people who are still in crisis are not in that limbo area of either not having their crisis fully resolved, but it doesn't elevate to the level of involuntary detention or voluntary detention for those. The other one is Three Verse Therapy that we briefly mentioned. That is primarily for substance use disorders. So if individual is paraphernalia, under the influence, small possession, they will have live life experience peers who come out and establish that rapport, try to get some type of therapeutic intervention going before discussing. So they have a little bit of resources to make sure that basic needs are met, make sure that they have food, clothes, maybe depending on their level of engagement, some housing. But again, that is not a 24/7 service. Then we have Lutheran, which is for youth and adolescents. And so the problem with that one is that you have to be Medicaid eligible only. There is no private insurance or uninsured for that. And so those individuals will come out, provide some wraparound services, work with the family, and hopefully resolve that crisis as well as they can. Lord's used to operate the Crisis Triage Facility known as Transitions. That has transitioned now to a RTF, which is a residential treatment facility. So that means one of our resources that we would have had for that in-between background of didn't raise to the level of psychiatric hospitalization or needing to be detained in an evaluation treatment facility, we no longer have that option. And so we have more community members who are out there not meeting the need for psychiatric hospitalization, but still not well enough to maintain employment, well enough to go to their school, or still having trouble with first responders, emergency services. And that's also where the Pasco Navigator Program comes in. And so the Resource Navigator that is with Pasco Fire are individuals with live life experience who can come out and primarily focus on those individuals who are over utilizing or eating up the ED times and first responders' times. And so frequent calls from either the emergency department for them to be evaluated or for having to be evaluated by fire and law enforcement. And so those are our current crisis and outreach services. Other facilities do some form of outreach, but this is our primary crisis and outreach service in Benton Franklin. Current gaps, so the Community Health Improvement Plan has identified behavioral health being the number one priority for the next three years. And so when we say behavioral health, that includes both substance use disorders and mental health. It's all under the same umbrella now. And so that is one of the primary focuses that will be moving forward for the next three years. Some of those current gaps, even though we do have outreach services, individuals who are in that in-between area, trying to get them into one of those outpatient providers we mentioned at the beginning is a long wait time. Traditionally, you could look at maybe a week to get in for an intake, but that's just an intake. That's an interview that gathers your basic demographic, some of your history, but it doesn't, you're not seeing a med provider, you're not seeing a therapist, you're not seeing anybody for that, and that is right now about three months out. So we could potentially do some outreach for individuals, come up with them, put a plan together, but without having any services for up to three months, that person and that issue is gonna continue, potentially getting worse. There's also staff shortages, and that's going across every area, not just in behavioral health, but in all sectors. Some of that is specific to certain areas and disciplines, like substance use disorder professionals, psychiatric inpatient unit stuff, crisis work, but it's affected everybody. And so the staff shortage, it may be that a resource does exist, but not having the staff to work in that is problematic. The other one is limited criteria. When you have people that have to meet certain criteria just to access a service, it's not available for everybody. And so if those individuals are undocumented, don't have, or they have private insurance, don't have the right managed care organization that has a contract with that provider, there are certain scenarios, same with if you or I went into a psych hospital and we had a sleep apnea machine, we wouldn't be able to get in there because that would be a medical issue that they wouldn't be able to take care of. So a sleep apnea issue, and now you don't meet that criteria to go in there. So there are so many things that people don't know that need the help, that you're not gonna be turned away based on whatever criteria that is. Same thing with access to services. We have very few providers that provide community outreach to the level of going into people's homes, going into their place, making sure that they have transportation to get where they're going. And so we tend to think if you can give somebody a referral, that somehow they'll just show up and get there, right? When most of the time, it could be just a simple transportation issue, or it could be a lot of issues that prevent them from getting to where they need to go. And so just handing somebody a card that says, show up here and make this appointment, isn't the most effective way to handle these individuals that are in our community in crisis. Another gap that we've had that a lot of you are well aware of is that we have no withdrawal management facilities whatsoever. That means social detox, so a place we used to call kind of a dry-out place, drunk tank, we have nothing like that. We have no secure detox, meaning that you would be detained there. We have no medical detox. I'll take any one of those, but we have none in our area. So for a population our size to not have any withdrawal management facilities is something that we really wanna focus on moving forward. And again, there is no youth inpatient or withdrawal facilities either. Our youth are either having to go to Spokane, Yakima, someplace else. And so there are other reasons why that's problematic as well, is having family members having to travel, especially with the one-tenth of one percent. If we had a facility here, people would be coming here. We would be generating revenue for our own community, instead that revenue is going other places. So what do we do about that? One of the suggestions would be to add some outreach clinicians, so somebody that's master level or at least bachelor level, and a psychiatric AR and PE to prescribe medication in that way. So if we're got somebody who is utilizing or over utilizing resources, rather than just waiting for them to call 911 again, we could put together some type of plan, get a medication, a treatment plan started, and monitor that until that three months' time came that that individual could get into some services. The other thing, as Chief Gear mentioned, we're doing more behavioral health training for our first responders, especially Pasco Fire. So that's an area that we are trying to focus on, that we have control. The other one is the Benton Franklin Advisory Committee. I will be an alternative on that committee for the Recovery Coalition. And the first thing that we're talking about is some mobile crisis. As Chief Gear mentioned, we had started the, our program where we had designated crisis responders co-responsing with law enforcement, that funding had been limited, and Lord's chose to not do that anymore. And so there's a huge gap there that we need people to first respond to either fire and EMS or law enforcement to provide some assistance, whether they don't have to ride along and co-respond, but at least sometimes on scene, it is nice to have a behavioral health clinician attached with that. And so one of the things that the Behavioral Health Committee is tasked with is putting an RFP for a mobile crisis unit, so that one of the providers in the community or outside will provide that service, as well as how we're gonna utilize that one-tenth of one percent. And so part of that is what the Recovery Coalition is pushing for, would have been a one-stop shop. LifePoint, who owns both Lord's and Trios, had some no-compete language in that purchase agreement. And so we are unable to do both mental health and substance use together at the KGH campus. It's owned by Trios, it's the old Kenwood General Hospital, that's over back ago. So Benton County is still going ahead with that purchase, but there will still be a no-compete clause in there for Lord's. And so what that means is rather than having the one facility, we will end up doing two facilities. And so we can still at that KGH campus, because that is a huge campus, do CLIP, which is long-term inpatient for youth. We could do some substance use issue there for youth. We could do all types of things, because Lord's doesn't provide the youth service, so that falls into, doesn't interfere with the no-compete, but we'd have to have a separate facility for two ENT facilities for detox. And so that's in the works as well. Purpose of that would be to have a no-wrong-door approach. We talked about that before, too many people are turned away for whatever reason. And if you're a private entity, you can turn somebody away because you want to. There is no, you know, way of making somebody, so whether it's too acute, short staffing, it's capped at a certain level, whatever excuse you wanna give for not admitting somebody, they're allowed to do that, where we are trying very hard in the RFP process to put a no-wrong-door approach language. So it means that fire, EMS, law enforcement can drop anybody off regardless of whether they're overly intoxicated, too violent, whatever the issue is, but we have one secure spot to drop them off, where they'll get pointed in the right direction, either referred or admitted to that facility. Some of the other issues that we are looking at is that in-between area. And so the healthcare authority is putting out a couple different grants for crisis respite, different clubhouses. Those of you guys know Wilson House used to be a clubhouse down there, down the street, recovery cafes, and there is some additional funding in for co-responder models. The language does not allow for it to be designated crisis responders, this go around, but it will be open to law enforcement to put in for that. So hopefully that didn't take up too much time and allow enough time for any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have about the current state of behavioral health.
Thank you, Mr. Fordmire. Question from Councilwoman Serrano.
Thank you. I think I have a couple, so I'll try to keep them brief. Can you go back a slide? When you mentioned one-tenth of one percent, that's referring to the mental health, the tax that was just recently passed. And how much of these services could you or would you fund with that? And then ultimately, kind of what's the next level ask from the city?
Good question. The amount of services is really dependent on what that need is, right? And that's where the advisory committee comes in together. And that represents different sectors from fire, law enforcement, the recovery community, live life experience. So everybody, and as up into the public as well. So everybody has an opportunity to say where those gaps are at and what they suggest to do. And so it really depends on the amount of money that's generated, right? And so I would say, if it's up to me, I'll take it all. I would rather have a robust community that has everything from prior to arrest in and then out after arrest and everything in between, right? You would have services that would be designed for the whole gamut of where you could divert and get somebody out who was in need of behavioral health services. But that is gonna depend on, you know, the amount of money, and then ultimately what the commissioners decide to do with that advice that the advisory committee comes up with.
Okay, so do you have a general timeline baked out of when you'll have a budget prepared, presented to the commissioners, and what you will ask from them? I mean, is that six months? We're talking a year, two years?
We are trying to put that mobile crisis in immediately. And so having an RFI, request for information, and then a request for proposal, to start that and get some help for our first responders now, because we do have those gaps. When we're talking about building these facilities and get them up and running, that's probably looking more at 2024, 2025. That's probably more realistic on when they would be. And so we can't keep going for another three years, having it be a big issue without having something. And so ideally, we would use that as the big project and the big end-up of where we want to go and fill in some of these gaps that we talked about on where those areas are at in the meantime.
I appreciate that. And then I'm sure you'll keep us posted. Will you do that through Chief Gear or be jumping in quarterly? Or what's our expectation to hear from you?
I take requests, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
I will point out to council that a couple of months ago, we did come in with a request to fund this outreach coordinator and the psychiatric AR and PE and that contract with Cameron's company. That contract is currently in legal for review, and we hope to get that on board, which would give us an actual contract employee to help fill this gap and be able to report into council more often on these types of actions and activities that are going on.
Thank you for that, Chief. Mayor Protan Maloney.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Obviously, this is something we've been talking about for a while. We spent some time at a retreat, talked about that, and you can see up on our council goals that this is high priority for us. And I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for the chief. I'll ask the chief, because he probably can do a more exact answer. Who is serving on the advisory committee from the City of Pasco?
I represent the fire agencies in Franklin County. And I don't think there's an additional City of Pasco representative on the advisory committee, but I am there as the city fire chief, but I also represent all the fire agencies in the county.
I appreciate that. I mean, given the percentage of the county that is made up by the City of Pasco, and more so the percentage of the sales taxes, revenue is being generated and collected by this tax, I'd hope we'd be able to, as a city, have a stronger voice in that than, you know, than it sounds like perhaps we have. So I don't know if that's a point of negotiation or if something that we as a council can step up and make some additional follow-up requests. But I'm, you know, obviously, again, I'm very supportive of these efforts. I mean, the need is strong, that our opportunities to go down to the All-America Cities Awards twice, these were big focal points for things that we were proud of in our community, and there's some areas we regress significantly on, not because of any mal-intention, just simply because of resources and where funding can come from. And I wanna be, I wanna be able to be really, really push forward and say, we are the city that does this. So anything we can do there, chief, I know I'll be supportive of, and I hope my fellow council members would be as well.
I hope council realizes I've been a strong advocate for this program and project for quite a few years when I've seen the impact it's had on both fire and law enforcement, and we are gonna get better.
Yeah, and I know it certainly is not due to any shortage of work in the air department or our police department, that we are, that we as a city are strongly, I'm not worried about the city, I guess, it's from my perspective, I'm just saying, yeah, we can have a louder voice in this. Switching gears, in terms of resources, when I was down in Vancouver for the All-America, or Association of Washington Cities, there we go, conference, and this is a really hot topic and one that I followed as many conferences or as many sessions as I could on. And they were talking about resource limitations across the state, and we know across the country, just hiring people, getting the qualified people in the seat so that they can do the work that needs to be done. We know that funding by itself is not gonna solve this. Can you speak at all to the larger picture of, even if this is funded, how do we, how do we make this happen? How do we actually get the resources in place?
Good question. And so we, as in Greater Columbia Behavioral Health, are the ASO, and so we either go between the state and some of these other, and the ASOs across the entire state have been advocating to lift some of the criteria for mental health professionals, whether that is to make more peer positions or reduce some of the requirements to make it easier for people to start getting in the field and start working. Some of those other ones have been paid internships as well. And so kind of fast-tracking people through a certificate, but also getting that work experience and kind of having it be a paid-on-the-job training. So there's some of the ways that we can work around that. But the other thing is just getting it out there and working with, you know, even our own colleges, Columbia Basin College, WSU Tri-Cities, and advocating for maybe CBC to get the Substance Use Disorder Professional Program back, and some of these other, we can show them that, hey, here are the areas that we need, and if you can, you know, funnel those students in as well, if they're in your psychology programs or anybody else, we can get creative that way. But yeah, really, what happens is, you're correct, is that we end up borrowing from other providers when new programs come, and then you just kind of have a circle thing. But yeah, we need new people into the program, especially as people are retiring as well.
I appreciate that. And one of the examples I heard of success was over on the West Side, they were able to partner with some of the universities and do those paid internships, and I think they were able to, gosh, it was something like a dozen FTE, full-time equivalent, staff members, over, you know, forty, you know, so people, that were all students. And they were using this for work credit and work experience while they're still getting their degree. You know, of course, under supervision of someone who is appropriately senior-level position understands and can help troubleshoot. So anything we can do there, again, I'd be happy to step in, talk to whoever needs to be talked to. I'll personally help set those meetings, so that's of any value. So anyways, I know this is, this is big. I know we've talked about using some of our ARPA funds to help fund, as Chief Gear was saying, in terms of some of the stopgap from the City of Pasco. But anything that we can do, I'll be supportive of. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Fordmire, it's good to see you again. I know I've participated at some of your coalition meetings, and this is a subject that for several of us in council is very important, that we get the proper funding, proper sources, resources. On that note, you did talk about the difficult situation in regards to home visits, to make sure people are getting the right services or the services that they need. Are you, have you created any plans, partnerships with maybe the clinics that are helping out your partners as far as community health workers, promotoras, or any of those? I know our fire department has two, if I'm not mistaken. You know, is there a plan to attract more assistance that way?
Yeah, and that was one of the discussions that we had, is adding to those type of teams, right? It's very important to have somebody who speaks your same language or comes from the background that you come from and that live life experience. But where those teams are lacking is to have some professional oversight that can do maybe some therapy in the homes, but also provide that med management level in between. The goal would not be to be providers, but it would be to help people who didn't need that before, and then that limbo area of waiting, right? Three months is a long time for a lot of things, especially if your family member's in need of some type of behavioral health treatment and having to wait. And so bolstering up the current programs that we have that do the outreach and providing that service that they won't be going long periods of time without something therapeutic being done.
Yeah, I'd just add, that's really where our Resource Navigator Program comes in a lot. We've been frustrated with the lack of home visits by, as you saw, there was three slides of providers, and getting some of them out to actually do something has sometimes been a little frustrating. And Cameron and I have had many discussions about this exact. And that's where our Resource Navigator comes in, is they try and be that go-between between those agencies and that person in need, and actually go out and meet with them. And if all it is is a ride to their treatment or their appointment, then we give them a ride. Whatever we need to do to facilitate them getting connected with the providers is really where that Resource Navigator Program comes in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Fordmire, again, it's great to see you, and we do look forward to the progress of this project.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And with that, we go on to our next item. Item B, cannabis discussion, considerations for retail sales, wholesale, manufacturing, et cetera, within Pasco, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, and council. And uh, as council is well aware, this has been a recent ongoing uh, issue for council, um, at least listening, not necessarily much discussion, but at least listening to people that are uh, weighing in on the idea of legalizing marijuana in some form or fashion uh, uh, in, in Pasco here. Uh, as the agenda report describes the background of the issue, both from the initiative standpoint and then the subsequent Pasco regulations that enacted a zoning ban on I five oh two activities. Um, so far, the majority of the conversation has centered around uh, the downtown area. But uh, again, as contained in the agenda report, um, there's a considerable amount of complexities. Uh, and a handful of those are outlined in the agenda report. As mentioned, repealing the ordinance that um, provided that I five oh two activity ban is relatively easy. Uh, but the process that comes after that isn't so relatively easy. Some of the issues that I think are described uh, are how this uh, either maintaining or repealing the ban on uh, I five oh two activities aligns with council goals. Both in terms of uh, the comprehensive plan, for example, or downtown or area-specific goals. It involves a decision on locations, not necessarily just a zoning district, but um, possible areas of the city that may be appropriate or inappropriate for I five oh two activities. Um, the extent of the um, cannabis-related activities needs to be discussed. Retail sales, again, has been the topic of discussion recently, but I five oh two also allows uh, growing production and processing. And to what degree, if any, should those be included in consideration of uh, an adjusted ordinance? The procedures for considering applications, uh, whether it's uh, an administrative approval, much like a permit for an industrial use or retail use, or should it be considered through some specialized land use process like a conditional use permit? The outreach to public, I know that the public has commented greatly, um, and council is well aware of the uh, twenty twenty one National Citizen Survey that seemed to indicate a public that's evenly divided on the issue. Um, but again, sometimes that evenly divided public switches gears when they find out exactly what's involved with uh, enacting uh, the activities considered by the uh, initiative. And then finally, council's expectations in regards to priority. Um, is this uh, an issue that um, needs immediate attention? Should it be folded into our downtown co- uh, master plan? Uh, and by the way, uh, we have asked our downtown master plan consultants to weigh in on this issue. We'll be hearing from them this Thursday, at least with making sure they have the right direction. They're not going to provide an in-depth analysis, but they will be able to provide some experience they've had with other cities in regards to this issue. So again, um, plenty of opportunities for discussion and um, staff is looking forward to uh, council's discussion tonight to help us narrow the amount of effort and the product that you eventually get or, or don't get if the decision is to uh, maintain the status quo.
Thank you for that. Questions or comments? Councilman Campos.
Yes, I'll be the first to jump in the shark tank here. Um, I just wanted to, you know, appreciate, again, I can't thank those of us that are sitting up here enough to think about this holistically and with open minds and can't thank the people who've commented on this enough. Um, I just want to summarize that, you know, what we're doing up here is we're doing nothing more than providing staff the next direction. And it might get to a point that after further fact-finding, we get to a point where all seven of us say this is a hard no in the city. So we're not taking any action tonight on whether or not we're going to allow it or not. We're giving staff direction on what we as the council want to hear back from. And there's a, like, like you heard from Director White, there's a lot of complexity in this issue. So to kick that off, I'll kind of summarize some of the public comment that I heard is, you know, people are saying no, but not or, or yes, but not in my backyard, which I default back to is a yes. And some of the answers that, the question, the answers that we need to provide to staff is if not downtown, where? And it sounds like they're able to and willing to provide more input and feedback through a couple of different avenues, right? We can do more uh, consultation with downtown development people. We can put another uh, survey out. We could, we have a bunch of different things we can do, but what I'm hearing is yes. I'm not hearing a flat no, absolutely not. I'm hearing a yes, but not in my backyard. So, so where? Um, I've heard on the outskirts of Pasco, I've heard, put it on Road one hundred, I've put it, put it in the downtown area. So I don't know that I have the right answer there, but I, I'm of the mind to continue to explore this to make sure that when we come to a this definite yes or no, we have all the information, which we discussed as a council at our retreat. And um, I think we owe it to the citizens of Pasco, both for or against, to continue to explore all of the facts.
Thank you for that. Further questions, comments? Councilwoman Roach.
I'd just like to ask uh, staff a question if there has been any progress made on scheduling maybe a couple of listening sessions. I know that's something that we discussed last week and felt like there was uh, you know, unanimous agreement that we maybe needed to have some, but not specifics of how and when uh, and where.
Uh, I'd be glad, uh, no, tho- those, that can be easily accomplished, uh, should council give staff direction in that regard, but none to date, no.
I think that continues to be a refrain, is that people in Pasco like to be heard on the topic. Um, so before making whatever decision is made, we need to get that input in the way suggested. Thanks.
Thank you for that, our Councilwoman Roach. Any further comments? Mayor Potamaloni.
Thank you, Mayor Brahas. And, and I want to really say I appreciate staff's pulling together a lot of these, these core topics for us to discuss. And I think um, I very much agree with um, Councilmember Campos that we are certainly s- still in listening mode, that's where we're at right now. Um, we've heard a lot, but we've heard a lot of voluntary come to, come to us and we haven't really gone a lot of outreach at this point in time. And I think that's where, where perhaps some of the gap is, where that is likely strengthened up is, is going out to, to, to look for specific stakeholders. To do so, I think that um, as, as indicated in some of Director White's comments is, we need to narrow down, what are we looking for? Obviously, we're not talking residential, right? That's, 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 that's not what we're talking here, but are we talking across the entire city? And for me, I guess, um, what I, when, if, if our, if, if we were to bring something forward and as, as we will need to do, as we often do at the city is for, for a purpose of discussion, we have to have something. Right now, it's uh, the conversation is running rampant with speculation and individual ideas, which are great in a brainstorming fashion. But we, to give staff an ability to move forward on this, we need to narrow down their focus to something. And so, so from my perspective, um, as again, as a starting point for conversation with the community, um, is what I would like to look at is uh, for, in terms of uh, zones would be C two, which is our downtown zone, C three, and then I one, two, and three. These tend to be compatible with the idea of retail um, um, cannabis sales from a standpoint that they typically do not have schools. They don't have daycares, they don't have a lot of those, um, they don't have parks, so they're often not conflicting uses of um, of space. So those may be um, may be good targets for, again, for further conversation and fleshing out with the community. Um, in terms of, of hearing from the community, I would, I would like to see um, two listening sessions, not here in City Hall. Um, out in the community, so we can hear more directly from people in the, in the neighborhoods and areas that we might, might be um, considering. So for example, um, a listening session at one of the uh, event centers downtown might be very appropriate and has been very effective for us in other ways for listening sessions. And then maybe one over and ma- maybe if we're talking about, again, as, as my proposals would be more, end up being more to, towards the industrial areas of the town. Maybe, you know, in Tierra Vida, maybe they'd be willing to host a listening session. Or if we're talking, you know, King City, is there a space where there were, that might be a, an appropriate spot? And perhaps instead, we break it up to a general public conversation and then we focus on, on businesses. Because we're talking about locating a, potentially locating a use within an industrial area, a heavy commercial area. Again, it's not residences that are going to be directly affected, it's going to be business owners that are going to be affected. And what we're hearing a bit of, of, um, you know, it's depending on who you're asking, you're hearing different conversations between the two. And so making sure we've heard from both of them, I think, is really important. So um, and, and I guess the most important thing for me is when we're talking about these and we're looking at these, I want to cut out some of the red herrings we're hearing, where, where we're just simply, some of these issues are not at all related to the legalization of retail cannabis sales. We have problems in the city that we are needing to address, uh, and we will continue to need to address regardless of this decision either to, to continue the ban or lift the ban. There is no magic bullets, this certainly isn't one of them, but that doesn't mean it's, it's, uh, you know, that we don't need to have conversations both on those things and also on this, so. Um, I hope, um, Director White, is that, does that hit some of the main points that you were looking for from, from council? I mean, I, I'm not trying to speak for anybody but myself, but is that, that answers some of your questions to help narrow us down?
Certainly, that helps, yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Campos.
Councilman, do you want to weigh in? I want to, okay. Um, so all that, if, if we continue to move forward on this and collect more information, if, if I saw something, I'm of the mind to also see this, to also, whatever we do, to come with a special use permit. It seems like the most appropriate way to make sure that if we decide to do this, go forward on it, that as Director White said, that we're going to be able to allow to and accommodate all the state regs. Um, so I'm of the mind for that. Um, you know, there's a couple of different things, a- and I think one of the discussions and questions that staff is asking for us is, are, are we just talking about retail sales right now? So the council isn't of the mind, the rest, you know, all seven of us, to talk about industrial use. We want to start small and see how that plays out. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
It's, it helps Councilmember Campos, I, I'm, if I didn't say I meant to, was retail only um, for this point in time.
I just wanted to make sure it was articulated in front of us, because again, this is an opportunity for all of us who are listening, right? To make sure that they hear the right information as well. So we're going to stay small on whatever information we want. As far as other bullet points, you know, social-wise, uh, Director White asked about impact and importance. You know, I, I don't think that we lump this into our downtown master development plan until we determine whether or not downtown Pasco is an appropriate fit for it. But as far as priority goes, you know, I don't think it fits in equality of life. I don't know that it totally falls in the community transportation network, safety or, or otherwise. So I would say that this has been a great conversation starter, a good thing to talk about. Again, I'm all in favor of, you know, a free market, but at the same time, i- it doesn't really align with all of our other priorities. So I would say it ranks pretty low.
Thank you for that. Councilman's Ron.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that synopsis, because I think it is important that we're very clear that presently, what we're discussing is retail sales and limited to that. And so I think, hopefully at least there's one takeaway for Director White and other staff members. Um, I, I think, I, I like the idea, we have to, I think we have to have further listening sessions because there are plenty of people who either are working right now or don't want to come here for whatever social basis, or they just don't care to come here. Um, I like the idea of Tierra Vida somewhere downtown. I think maybe if we can get something at the Hapo Center might be worthwhile because there's a possibility that we have that level of interest where we need that type of seating. Um, I hope, you know, I, I think we've all heard it, it's all been very vocal. Uh, the question is whether or not it's rinse and repeat comments or new information, um, because we are seeing and hearing a lot of the same faces. Um, and, and that I think uh, includes those of us who hear from our neighbors who don't show up on Mondays. I- it's the same ten people possibly, right? Now, the question is, what does that represent? I, I, I don't know, um, whether or not it's, it's forty-five or four. I think um, limiting it to certain zoning areas probably makes the most sense. Um, should we look at, you know, whether it's C two, C three, and the industrials? I think that's probably the place to start for now. We've talked a lot about downtown and you know, I, I know talking to some of the business owners even before this, there's very high level of concern of bringing it into their area downtown. So expanding it to the industrials, the King Cities, et cetera, there may be value in that. I think if we're going to move forward with this conversation, uh, I like the idea, the concept of a special use, a conditional use permit that will be vetted by, you know, outside legal counsel, that's, that's who our um, hearing officer is. You know, it's a land use attorney, someone that does this stuff by day and by night. I think there's a lot of value in that process. And then it's confirmed or reviewed by our legal counsel, someone who knows and understands the operations of Pasco. So I think we're getting two cuts at the legal analysis. Um, so I think there's a lot of benefit in taking that approach. And then ultimately, we as council would then have to sign off on that. We're not abdicating our responsibility to some outside individual. I mean, that's a very clear element of the process that we need to continue is that the ultimate decision is made up here by these seven people. We're not going to shuffle that off to staff or to a contractor, to someone else. We have to own this responsibility as the elected officials of the city, and we will. I think, you know, for now, that's, that's uh, probably hopefully sufficient direction, that we move forward with listening sessions. Make it clear about retail and then limit it for now, at least, to those areas presently designated. And I think that's critical uh, designation, that presently designated, that in the event that someone wants to put uh, another retail cannabis or especially a grow area, um, that they would have to seek a modification to the zoning and then a conditional use permit. I think that twofold step is critical. You know, because there's, there are other parts where, you know, you could drop a C one into a C two or a C three. And um, but I think if we use this presently designated, I think that's a critical element. So those are my thoughts for now. Um, I think we're having a great conversation. I, I'm still going to state my disappointment that we were literally a day late and a dollar short on sending this to an advisory vote because I believe, I still strongly believe that's where this belongs, is to hear from the people. Um, I understand that five oh two was seven, eight years ago. I can't remember, maybe my time is off, maybe it's six years. Um, that, but it is what it is. Here we are. And I don't know that it makes sense to push it all the way till a special election in February or March. So I think we collect the voice of the people and move from there. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Councilman Brown.
Um, I just wanted to say I concur with all that's been said, but my one question would be is when can we get started? When can we have this conversation? When can we sit and just talk to the community about this topic? How soon can it happen?
I mean, that, that's entirely up to council, but I, I think probably, uh, at least Rick and I haven't had a chance to chat about this. My expectation, at least we bring a map back here really quick with the areas laid out, so you could kind of see what that looks like before we throw something out there to the public.
Okay.
No, thank you. That's fine. End of my comment.
Any further questions?
I just also wanted to, excuse me, I just wanted to also uh, echo Councilman Browns. I also agree with what we're saying up here, but uh, obviously, I'd like to have a decision as soon as possible. I know there's people in the audience that would, don't want to be waiting as long as also. So hopefully in October, November, we could, as a council, make a decision on this. I just think, obviously, time is of the essence and uh, it'd be good to hurry this along so it doesn't drag out like a lot of issues do. Not in jab at the staff, but sometimes it seems like things go on forever, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Well, Mr. White, before I make my comments, I do have one request. The map that was sent with, uh, in the agenda, I'm not sure about everyone else, but my legend is not legible. So if you could explain a little bit about what the restricted zones are?
Yeah, um, I apologize for that. I don't know why that didn't show up. But uh, the map outlines the state mandated buffers a- around parks and schools. So it shows the locations of the park and or school, and then the circle around that is a, a, a thousand-foot buffer.
So it's dark blue can do, dark green can, uh?
I think we all got the same map.
Yeah, there's, the legend's entirely illegible.
It's in Morse code.
It's, it's basically dots and I only see blue squares, green squares.
Okay, so, well, we, we can, that's easy, easy to fix, not right now, but I can certainly get that to.
So it's like, I creatively worked around this and found one of the three options we can look. So I got on the website and only one of the two types of website views could give me there. Uh, the dark blue is schools, those are actual school locations. The light blue buffer around it is a thousand foot, that a thousand foot, foot raging around it. The green, the dark green are parks, and then the thousand-foot buffer is a lighter green. Director White, do I, do I have that right?
Okay, that helps. I guess I just really want to say, um, we do need to set up the listening sessions as soon as possible. I concur with what my uh, fellow council members are saying here. Um, we do need to move this along. It's been a discussion that's been taken on. Move this along, it's been a discussion that's been taken on, a lot of resources and a lot of conversations. And I get that we do need all the information and as much information as we can, uh, we keep hearing from the neighbors. We keep hearing from businesses, um, both pro and, and con, um, so some in support and some are not. And again, um, if we can move along the listening session, sessions. Um, to really gauge what the community is, is saying and wanting. Um, from there, we should expedite, again, the process of making sure it's retail. And making sure every, everything else that was discussed up here is, um, aligned with the outcome that will benefit. Or that will be what the community wants. And again, just wanna reiterate that we here are to do what the community wants. Any further questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. White. And with that, move on to item C, capital improvement plan, CIP twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight, and Director Sigal.
So I'm, I'm gonna kick it off with just a few introductory comments, so, um, the council indulged me a few minutes, and then we'll get into the. Into the PowerPoint presentation, but, um, so the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight CIP. Is a six year, and in this case, a seven year plan, uh, identifies capital projects and land use acquisitions, uh, for that period. Uh, I think you're all, you know, the, the CIP has been going through its own CIP, the, a, uh, continuous improvement process. To try to, uh, make it better and more readable for, uh, the council and for the public. And for staff as well, uh, as we've, uh, kinda gone through the years, you'll see it's getting a little bit more sophisticated every year, matter of fact, this year. Uh, it's very, it's gonna be electronic, uh, through open gov. And, uh, I, I think the public's really gonna appreciate, uh, the accessibility, so. Uh, the plan itself provides a listing of projects in each functional area, along with totals. Uh, we'll have individual, we have individual project seats for every project that provides justification of the project. Uh, schedule and preliminary financing package. Uh, also a number of spreadsheets, uh, by fund, which, uh, provides, uh, the reader with scheduled expenditures. And, uh, funding resources, grants, low interest loans, bonds, et cetera. And then, uh, something else we added to the CIP this year is, um. Uh, contributions through external partners, and, uh, council's gonna see that that, uh, relates to well over a hundred million dollars. Uh, in the CIP for what people build, public infrastructure, the development builds. Uh, and as I said, again, uh, the first year the planably, we presented electronically. CIP, uh, council's aware, is, uh, generated from a combination of a number of different sources. So the comprehensive plan identified a lot of the projects and is kind of the basis. I mean, it, it is the thing that drives, that anticipates the growth and the, the, uh. Land use designations and things like that, and from that is what plans, system plans like for water, sewer. Uh, processed water, storm water, parks and recreation, transportation. The comp plan drives those plans, and so those plans will identify and get very much more specific about what kind of projects. Need to occur and when they need to occur, uh, facilities as well. And then, of course, public info, uh, we've heard a lot of public info about marijuana, public also talks to us about transportation issues and. And, uh, other things like that too, so. And then the council visioning process, the council, where you come up with your goals, that's also a, uh, an influencer, the transportation. Or, excuse me, of the CIP, uh, particularly as it relates to the timing of some of the projects. And then also, uh, one of the things we've worked on quite a bit over the last several years is, uh. Uh, renovation of some of the older parts of our systems, so our maintenance staff has been much more engaged, uh. Over the past ten years or so in identifying those kind of projects where things are wearing out, and we need to get after it and get replacing it. Or maybe they've just been outgrown, and our maintenance staff, they're the first line of defense on those facilities, and so they kinda know. Uh, what's happening out there, and are, kind of one of our best sources of information. Uh, because they're developed, uh, to support them, uh, the collective impacts of CIP planning are. Very much, uh, similar to the council's adopted goals, they have to do with health and safety and quality of life. And infrastructure for operations, whether that's public or private, uh, financial stability, uh, those type of things. And so it's, it's, your, your goal, your council goal is very much aligned with. What, uh, what, how, what, the, excuse me, the menu of these projects, because the menu of these projects are developed to support your council goals. But at the end of the day, CIP plan, and I always like to give this little spiel, it's, it's a plan. And, uh, in adopting the plan, council does. Signal its intent to the public and to staff, its efforts to move towards implementation of plans included in the CIP. The caveat being that's based on the information we know right now, when we're looking at this plan, and some of it we're pretty sure of, uh. Twenty-two, we're positive of, all right, but twenty-three, pretty sure, twenty-four, very sure. Then it gets a little less, and you know, twenty-eight, you know, we're, we're hoping in a lot of cases. So, uh, project included in the plan, uh, is not a guarantee it'll be built as described. And this council, many of you have been on the council long enough to have seen where projects evolved, sometimes they get combined. And so they kinda take on a little bit of a life throughout the course of a six year plan. And, uh, also I would say beyond the scope, estimates too can change significantly, we've seen that a lot in the last couple of years, all over the place. Public, private sector, uh, you know, one of the, one of the factors, and I don't, I don't have it listed later, but, uh. I'll, I'll met, try to remember to mention that, uh, our, our plan has grown in dollars. And part of that is the inflationary cost we've all been hit with over the last particular eighteen months or so. Uh, but it just, just in the life cycle of a plan itself, the first, uh, number you see in twenty twenty-eight out here. For a new project is gonna be kind of a plug number, and, uh, as that project starts to move up the continuum. Uh, you're gonna see feasibility analysis occurs, and so you're gonna have a little bit more refined number. Designs completed, it's gonna be much more refined, because you're gonna be basing it on current bids at the time, but, uh. Nothing is, uh, as sure a predictor of cost as a successful bid. And so it, really, you don't know until you actually bid the project what that's gonna look like, so. Our, our, as I said, our twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight plan includes a hundred and eighty-nine projects, so, uh, several more than last year. And a total of eight hundred and thirty-three million dollars, which is a pretty significant, uh, amount of money over a seven year period. Uh, we're gonna walk through some of the metrics tonight, touch on a brief description of, uh, completed projects. And then highlight several major projects on the near term horizon. Uh, you do have detailed information in your packets, and then the New City website, uh. I won't go into the address, but, uh, find it online, uh, uh, through ClearGov, sorry, not OpenGov. And, uh, certainly staff will be available, we have a couple of weeks, uh, before we talk about this again, so, uh, we have a fifth Monday coming up, so. With that, uh, touching on some of the completed projects. Uh, we, we actually had a presentation last week that was tangential to this, uh, Station eighty-five site work. Where we had workers on that site, actually put the first fire out from that site in the community. And, uh, A Street Soccer, uh, awarded bids on that just recently, so these are projects that'll be done. Uh, and not in the, in, uh, not in twenty twenty-three, Schlegel Boat Park, uh, or Schlegel Park Boat Launch Improvements, again. Recent award by council, uh, Argen Road Widening Phase One, uh. Pretty much complete, substantially complete, you got some punch list items working through on that. Uh, Industrial Way, uh, Stormwater Retrofit and Overlay, gonna be complete here very shortly. Our Santafer Park Widening, Twentieth Avenue Pedestrian Beacon, which was a CBC, uh, partnership. And there's, there's a pretty good, uh, number of projects in there, I, I did wanna, I won't go through all of them, but, uh. Also would wanna mention, we had a couple of in-house overlays we did this year, which, those are our. Public Works Crew out there doing overlays on streets, and again, it's this. You, you pave a street, it's gonna last twenty, maybe twenty-five years before you have to get in there and do something significant like an overlay. So Sacagawea Park Road is something they just completed, I think the railroad tracks almost all the way out to the highway. Which was a very significant, uh, project and much need of repairs, that was an awesome project for to do in-house. And then Drady and Road fifty-two intersection, we took an old country road intersection and upgraded it, made it a lot safer. Uh, but you, I think from this list, and you'll see in the plan too, is, uh, really trying to, you know, council in the past has. Have been working on approving lists that are very much balanced across the city, and so you see investments across the city. A couple of other, uh, things I wanted to talk about, and that's assessments and evaluations, and you'll see a ton of work's been done. We're, we're just wrapping up the comprehensive transportation master plan this year. Uh, we'll have the Butterfield, uh, Water Treatment Plant Facility Plan done, uh, and that, that'll. That will, uh, identify probably tens of millions of dollars worth of work on Butterfield, that's a very old facility. And, uh, it is in need of upgrades, but it's been our workhorse for decades. But, uh, again, it's one of these things that you, you, you build it, you do have to rebuild it at some point in time. Um, there's give it evaluation for irrigation water up north and the new, newly annexed areas. Uh, Process Water Reuse, we've talked a lot about that, we're talking, again, tens of, tens of millions of dollars there to keep supporting our industrial. Area, and that's paid for by our industry processors. Uh, Parks and Rec Master Plan, we'll have a number of, uh, projects, and a lot of those have been incorporated into this plan. Uh, Police Strategic Plans identified, and we'll talk about it tonight, just briefly, we're not gonna go into all the projects, but, uh. Talk about the, the training, uh, center and the expansion of the, uh, Police Department. And then Fire Department Master Plan Update and Stations, uh, eighty-six and eighty-seven. And then, of course, we have underway our tax increment financing, uh, analysis and those projects there, yeah, and we're talking about thirty. Thirty-five million dollars worth of projects, so. Um, uh, of the one eighty-nine projects and eight hundred and thirty-three million I mentioned, uh. Three hundred and sixty-two are identified just over the biennium, and we have about sixty-five, uh. Percent of funds, uh, secured, and I did wanna mention, again, I talked about how these projects are spread out over the. Uh, the city, and you can see from that graphic, uh, they're a, a pretty good, uh, uh. Distribution of projects in every part of the city, the stuff on the right, of course, out in the Process Water Reuse and the. Little bubble to the fire left over in Richland is a little sidewalk project we like over there, no, just kidding. That's the, that's the, uh, uh, Emergency Dispatch Center that we, uh, participate in. With, uh, a number of the other agencies around Tri-Cities area, so that, that's representative of our share of improvements to happen there, so. With that, I think I'm turning it over to Director Sigal at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, and evening, council. With the CIP, as, uh, Mr. Zabel mentioned, um, it is an eye-popping number, um, of. Eight hundred and thirty-three million dollars, and, um, this is, uh, quite a, quite a significant rise. And, uh, I hope that all of the completed assessments and evaluations that we just went through gives you an idea of why. Uh, that increase, we've gone through a lot of assessment and valuation of our different systems and services, um, that we have within the city. And with that comes the need for new projects that are included within this capital improvement plan. This is about an increase of three hundred and twenty-seven million dollars from prior year. Uh, however, uh, there are certain things that, uh, account for most of this increase. Uh, part of it is that, uh, we started the external partnership, inclusion of the external partnership piece. That is traditionally not done, but in a growing city, it gives you a bigger picture of what is happening around the city. Because there's a lot of, uh, our, um, partners in the development community that also contribute to the infrastructure of the city. Uh, and we have really, um, added quite a bit and worked with this community to understand what are the upcoming things. On the eastern side of the city as well as the northwestern side of the city, so you see about. An increase of a hundred and twenty-three million dollars just in that area. This is not exactly, uh, a hundred and twenty-three million dollars that the city has to expend to build that infrastructure. But we still consider that to be a partnership, and in some ways, the city will be involved in, um, in some form of contribution. Um, or partnership to, to complete the projects. Uh, we also have some significant, uh, projects that, uh, we're, we're including. Um, and some of them are the Commercial Avenue Extension, and then the two overpasses on Harris Road, Chapel Hill, and Road seventy-six. And these are, they include what at this time we think are going to be, um, construction costs and design costs as well. But of course, um, as Mr. Zabel mentioned earlier, uh, subject to change as we get closer and closer to that project timeline. And that accounts for almost a hundred and thirty-one million dollars. Um, there are some buildings and facilities, uh, pretty soon here, we will be talking about, um, some of the facilities required for our public safety sector. And, um, those were something that were not included in the prior capital improvement plan, um, at the rate of about thirty-three million dollars. So if you add all of those components, you get pretty close to why that increased, and then you think about the inflation. Uh, especially for construction sector, then, um, the eight hundred and twenty-three million dollars kinda starts. Um, starts to make sense a little bit. Uh, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, uh, we have, uh, we started an electronic capital improvement plan. Last year in a pilot form, at that time, the finance department was just kind of utilizing it to learn the system. Before we could deploy it out to the rest of the city, and at this time, uh, we have, for this CIP, we have fully. Uh, deployed the tool, and, um, definitely has been very helpful in preparing, uh, the capital improvement plan. In a, um, in an effective and efficient manner, and, um, also. It's, so it's been good for us internally, saving us a lot of time, but we do believe that. The format with which we're able to now publish the capital improvement plan, uh, will help our, uh, residents. Be able to navigate the, uh, navigate the projects, as you could see, the map was from the tool, here's the next slide, please. The map was from the tool, so you can really look at what are the projects across the city. But many of you might be interested in seeing what's in your neighborhood and what's getting built, um, around your neighborhood or businesses. And it allows for that, um, visualization of, of our plans, um, and for, um. The, the viewers at home to be able to go and look at what's happening, uh, in their surroundings as well. Also, usually, capital improvement plan is six years, um, i- in timeline, uh, however, we are doing seven years. Due to biennial budget, uh, and it just helps us kinda keep things on track on what has been authorized by council. And what's upcoming, so we like to keep those things in tandem, um, so you'll see a seven year timeframe instead of six years. Uh, and what you'll also see with, uh, with an electronic, we're also working on an electronic budget book. Um, which is also via ClearGov, so you will see, uh, our capital improvement plan within our budget book. With the same level of access as well, so we believe that that's going to be beneficial for, um, our residents. Who are interested in seeing what the city is doing, next slide, please. Unsecured funding is always, uh, something that, uh, is a concern for the finance department. Um, however, uh, I can definitely say there's a lot of safeguards between the plan. Um, which is just a plan, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, um, to, uh, for it to be included in the budget. There are some projects that we do include in the budget, even though they're unsecured, because of our confidence in. Uh, being able to secure the funding, uh, but even then, even if it's in the budget, our culture has always been. Um, to assess whether it needs to be spent or not, just because it's budgeted, doesn't mean that things have changed. So all of, um, my peers here, um, make that decision on a day-to-day basis. Furthermore, for larger capital projects or purchases, council also is involved in, in approving bids. And change orders, things like that, so there's a lot of safeguards in place, uh, before we go and spend on a project. Where we do not know where the funding is coming from. With that in mind, you can see here, very small, uh, sliver there of twenty twenty-two. Where there's something that is unsecured, a project about twenty-eight percent, which is largely around our reuse facility. That is unsecured and scheduled for twenty twenty-three, and same for, um, twenty twenty-four as well, twelve percent. I will say that in my five or six years of capital improvement plan, um, this is the least amount of. Unsecured funding in a capital plan that I've ever seen, and that's, um, because you've already taken some actions. Especially around our utilities where, where we have, uh, set rate increases that are required to complete these projects. Um, so there will be enough funding to actually be able to issue debt and complete those projects. So there are, uh, actions that the council has taken to actually be able to have sixty-five percent of the seven year. Capital Improvement Plan to be secured, and that's, um, that's quite a feat, usually, um, you have secured items during your. Annual or biennial budget, and then after that, it, it start, the numbers start getting fuzzier. With that, a couple of, and please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. These are just wall of numbers. I felt at some point, we needed to communicate the full scope of of things that we're doing. But just by category, buildings and facilities, we're planning to spend about one hundred and eleven million dollars overall and forty, around thirty-five million in the next biennium. For some of the larger ones are the regional law enforcement facility, the Public Works Operations Center, things like that. Water utility, Butterfield Water Treatment Plant that we that Mr. Zabel spoke of is a big one. Reservoir storage tank, I believe we just had a land purchase action by council. So definitely a project that is going to be moving forward. Sewer utility, we've got big projects going on for improvement. We have phase one, two, three of the wastewater treatment plant improvements overall. And for process water reuse facility, big investments here as well. And I mentioned that a large part of this is unsecured earlier. But again, the pre-treatment improvements, multiple phases, one, two, three. I thought at some point there was a four, but I only see three here. But multiple phases adds up to big numbers. Our irrigation and stormwater utilities are pretty small compared to most most of our utilities. Upgrades like well capacity upgrades for the irrigation utilities as well as for stormwater infiltration improvement programs, as well as some of the pipe relining as well. And Parks and Recreation, coming off of the Parks Master Plan. Major projects like Community Mark Park Northwest, Sacagawea Trails, A Street, different phases of A Street Complex, Soccer Complex. And for roadways, significant amount of investment at two hundred and thirty-seven million, which is probably our largest one, and sixty million scheduled for the next biennium as well. We have the overpass I mentioned, and a lot of overpasses I'm seeing cost a lot of money. And just the four, five overpasses adds up to more than a hundred million dollars. And our external partnerships, like I mentioned before, they're projects that are led by private developers with possible participation from the city. And at this point, we're just including the major ones that really change the infrastructure for the city or of of major points or areas of concern. So they're included and they add up to one hundred and fifty million dollars. And again, these are not projects that are going to be led by the city, but something that the city will be part of. With that, our our next topic is public safety. And I will let Mr. Zabel move ahead as there's some significant investments needed in this area.
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna kick it off and I'm happy the chiefs chiefs talk about the police headquarters and training and the construction of the new fire stations and the dispatch center projects. But there's a number of projects in here and we're just gonna kind of walk through. And then the directors will kind of take it from there and then I'll close up when we get closer. So I guess chief.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, Madam Mayor, council members. On the heels of your direction, a a goal to complete our five-year master plan, strategic plan for the police department, not surprising that that identified additional staffing and resources that we're gonna need in the police department to accommodate growth that we are seeing now and into the future. Will quickly outgrow the existing police headquarters where we're at today and be looking at moving or expanding that for for growth. Under your current goals of public safety, ensuring that we have good resources and good facilities for our police officers, our professional staff inside the department, it's important that we start planning now for what expansion of headquarters might look like. We think that police training, as you know, there's been discussion about the police academy coming to the to the region. Pasco will be the pilot project for that. Plus, recent legislative mandates to increase professionalism, professional training for law enforcement officers. We think Pasco is poised to be a regional site to host training for this side of the mountains. As you as you might be aware, training for law enforcement officers is is largely run out of Bury in the suburb of Seattle. So to mitigate the 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 transportation and the logistics for eastern Washington, southeast Washington, to have a regional center, we think it's we're poised in a good position to do that. We need to expand anyways. We need to expand the training facility at our headquarters in in Pasco here. The you'll notice council chambers, an expansion has been added to that in a move as a consideration for council. It doesn't have to be part of this, but it could be, as an opportunity for us to jointly share training and and meeting space during off time that council isn't using them and maximize the facilities and where we're at with those. So I think I think in closing, I just wanted to give a high overview of that and ensure you that we are looking, continually looking for professional law enforcement services and to expand the the mandates required upon us to ensure that we have the very best police officers working the city with the most, with the best modern practices that's been identified for for the future of law enforcement. Thank you.
Moving on to the Fire Department, and we certainly have talked about the need for additional stations as the city grows both internally and grows externally, grows farther out. As you know, Station Eighty-Five is in Phase One of construction, which is basically just site work, road widening and utilities. We're hoping to go to bid in October on that and see if where the bids come in and what the funding looks like. Station Seven, originally, we thought that that station would be farther out and that's why it's numbered seven. And Six would be sooner in the northwest area of the city. But the possibility of the casino coming into that industrial area in King City and then the Dairy Gold facility and some other facilities are gonna accompany that may push our hand a little bit on Station Seven in the next few years, and we'll have to look at that. Station Six in the northwest area, my recommendation is we still don't know enough about the road infrastructure that's gonna go in there to do a good job of citing a station there yet. And then one of the other items that was on the list you saw was the dispatch center. And just an update on that, I sit on the executive board of the dispatch center representing the city. And we've identified about fifteen million worth of technological improvements that have to be done over the next few years to shore up the microwave system or rebuild the microwave system and a couple of the radio systems. So we placed a million dollars just as a placeholder right now in CIP, not knowing where that funding is gonna come from. The executive board really doesn't know where the funding is gonna come from, whether it could be a levy of some kind or whether it's gonna be assessments on partner agencies within the center. So I thought it was prudent to to put a placeholder in there right now so we didn't have to go back and redo that. So if there's any questions, thank you.
Any questions from council? No, no questions.
Well, if there's questions for Chief Roski, is that be up for that? Just one to ask you about, because I saw the the image of the expansion onto City Hall. In the CIP, there is a allocation for acquiring property other than, is there a, is that correct? There was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item for purchase of land for the training center in the budget?
So so what you probably saw was the training facility upgrade that we're in right now. So we will be looking at remodeling the current training facility to house the police academy coming there temporarily. Then as we transition out of there, the city can continue to use that building for other city services to grow into. So you'll see a line item of three hundred and fifty thousand to complete renovation of that building fairly soon. And that will hold us over until we can get a larger facility permanent structure built.
Okay, yeah, I see it listed as training center land purchase on the budget, so that's what.
I've I've got training facility upgrade on mine.
Councilman, that is actually, I think that three fifty is to purchase additional land for the fire training center.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further questions from council? Mayor Padilla Maloney.
Thank you. And Chief Roski, I just wanted to make the snarky comment of if we have a training facility here, then, you know, just like in a baseball stadium, you know, your home team's got the nice quarters and then the away team's got some, you know, dump-out McBoonies. Let's make sure that we have some spots so our our regional partners who may want to come and and approach all the good people have somewhere, you know, appropriate for them to stay.
We do, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Any comments to Director Sigdell regarding her budget?
I kind of like the way Madam Mayor is going on this.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that.
Is your presentation complete or is there further items?
We we definitely have many other items. I'm I'm sorry. We do have Parks and Recreation and our utilities as well, but I'm sure it'll be very, very quick.
I'm ready.
All right, thank you, Zach Rakhi, ACS Director. One thing I think we've looked at over the last couple of years is an emphasis on parks, recreation and facilities projects of quality and community impact over quantity. In addition to that, looking really hard at how we propose estimations for the projects. So we've got a number of exciting projects we wanted to highlight this evening for the council. Moving on to baseball, we do have various Geesa Stadium improvements. A number of years ago, we took out a bond for fan-focused improvements. We replaced seats and lighting at the facility. To allude to Councilman Maloney's thing about locker rooms, we have to repair the locker rooms and we have to have equal quality of locker rooms between home and visitor. So that's a project that's currently under design. This is to meet Major League Baseball standards. It's one of the conditions to keep the Dust Devils in as a as a ball club, minor league ball club for the community here as well. We'll also be working on upgrades and repairs to the aging outfield fence, including putting padding on there for outfielders and keeping the facility up in in that area as well. A longer-term project, if you look at the slide to the right, is parking lot improvements, a fan walk, adding lighting and landscaping to the parking lot out there, just dressing it up pretty nice. So that's definitely a longer-term, more expensive project, but something we're looking at for the facility out in that area. The animal shelter design is about ninety-nine percent complete. You'll see an item later on this evening about right-of-way vacation. And then there's some some land use items that we're working on to complete that. And then looking to go out to bid this fall and begin that that well-long-awaited regional project. Funding is secured and that is funding in part with ours, our city, Richland and Kenwick as well. So we're excited to see that one get going. Martin Luther King Center renovation and expansion. We are working on issuing an RFP for design, developing the programmatic concepts within as well as the scope of work, which will include renovations to the current facility and potential expansion to provide community meeting rooms, recreation offices, cooperation with Mid-Columbia Libraries on a small branch on that facility. We do have a number of funding partners secured, including state funds and funds from the federal government as well as local funds for this project. So looking to kick that one off and really involve the community in a lot of that design as well. And then Memorial Pool Bubble Cover. So we are working in earnest to get the Aquatic Center with the Pasco Public Facilities District Aquatic Center project going. We do have partnership on this project with Pasco School District and a local swim organization to put a removable bubble over the current memorial pool, which will give it winter usage and allow for competition swimming and pool usage as well as school programs, learn-to-swim programs for kids of all ages and recreational programs to continue throughout the year. So working on that, these will be some of the exciting projects we'll be bringing forth to the community through this council in the coming biennium.
Good evening, Council. Steve Worley, Public Works Director. We'll have just a a few projects to go over really quickly. I'm gonna do this as quickly as I can. As you can see on the screen right there, there's a list of projects that we are looking at, including into the capital improvement program. And if we go to the next slide, we'll just jump right in. Here is a list of all of the bike and pedestrian projects that we have. A couple of these are related to coordination with the Pasco School District. One of them, we just recently, the top-left one, A Street and Sixth Avenue Pedestrian Crossing, we just found out recently that we received the grant funding for that project. So we're very excited about that. Oh, and the one top middle, Sylvester Street Overpass. Don't tell anybody, but we hear we may have gotten on the list for full funding for that one as well. Not official yet, so don't go telling anybody. Next one. This one, obviously, everybody knows about, the Lewis Street Overpass Project. And the exciting thing about this one I can tell you about, tomorrow morning, starting at three AM, the first girder will be placed on the bridge. So we'll see you all there. We actually have to do it kind of early in the morning because the girders are coming all the way from Oregon. And the heat of the day has a tendency to expand the girders. And we have to measure them before they get placed. So very exciting. So we'll see you out there. The next one is the Sylvester Street Safety Improvements. We've talked about this several times. This is gonna build pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The next project is a supplement to that, and that is the one I just mentioned where we are gonna be building a pedestrian bicycle bridge over Highway Three-Ninety-Five. The next one is Court Street and Road Sixty-Eight Improvements, which we've talked about in the past. And we just recently received partial funding from the Benton Franklin Council Governments. We received a one point two-two-five million dollar federal grant to help accommodate this project. The next one is the I-one-eighty-two Broadmoor Interchange Project. Council has seen this one several times. And we have an item on the agenda later tonight to bring before you the final design costs, contract amendment for this loop ramp and roundabout. The next one are the tax increment financing projects for the Broadmoor area. There are several projects highlighted in yellow that are currently being worked on. We've got a consultant on board and we are slowly working our way to the development of construction drawings for these as well. Next is the Road Seventy-Six Overpass Project. This is one of the overpasses that Director Sigdell mentioned was causing quite a bit of increase in the capital improvement program cost. We did submit a federal raise grant for this, and unfortunately, we were not successful on this one. This is one of those projects that was identified as part of the Broadmoor Interchange Access Revision Report. And this one project will significantly help with congestion at Road Sixty-Eight and at Road One Hundred. This takes the local traffic off of those two interchanges and allows them to get back and forth over the freeway much easier. The next one is the Process Water Reuse Facility. We've been to council several times. We've got an item on the agenda a little later tonight to talk about it. The next slide shows that we have three basic improvement projects related to the pre-treatment. We've seen this many times before. What I'd like to do is point out to you on the right image, the four little pink diagonal squares right there, keep that in mind for the next item on the agenda. We're gonna talk about that just a little bit, okay? The other utility is sewer. And with sewer, like has been said before tonight, we have a lot of projects needed for the sewer program, wastewater treatment plan improvements, Phases One and Two. Phase One is under construction, Phase Two is getting completed. You can see here in this photo, the one on the left is a little bit older. There is an aeration basin there now that has been fully completed and another one on the other side of the existing basins. And so we are working on getting the new outfall going for the wastewater treatment plant, and that project is continuing. The next one is the East UGA Expansion Sewer LID. Council probably recalls this one. This one is going to be completed in four different phases. The first phase right now we're working on is the BNSF sewer crossings. We've got a gravity main and a force main to go under the BNSF. So all of the work related to getting permission and approvals from BNSF has been started. We'll probably bid that out as a separate project just to keep it going. The gravity line from Dairy Gold will be fit Phase Number Two. The Glade Road Lift Station, which will take all of this wastewater and send it over to the other side of the railroad tracks into our gravity system. And then the last phase of this project will be the extension of the gravity mains out through all that developable property towards Road Sixty-Eight. The next one is stormwater irrigation, as was mentioned. The next one is stormwater irrigation, as was mentioned by City Manager Zabel. We have a new project that we're proposing to add capacity for the source of water for our irrigation system. We're gonna be building a pump station at the northwest area of the city where we will be pulling irrigation water from the South Columbia Basin Irrigation District and pumping it into our system and that is going to provide a significant amount of capacity for the growth that's planned for the northwest area of the city. Uh, for the water, we're planning to do several projects. Uh, the first one is the, uh, Zone Three Water Reservoir that we talked about. You, uh, approved the purchase of the property for the construction of this. Uh, we are working towards a guaranteed maximum price for this. This is the city's first, uh, progressive design-build project, which is, uh, great. Um, you recall that we did a change order on this con-this contract already for the advanced purchase of some pipe because of some, uh, delivery issues we wanted to try to avoid. We will be coming back to council very soon for a second change order, given that this is a design-build project. We can do both at the same time. So we'll probably do some site grading and some foundation work and go ahead and get that started soon. So. The next one are the West Pasco Water Treatment Plan Improvements, phases one, two, and three. As council may recall, phase one is currently under construction. Phase two was recently awarded by the same contractor who's doing phase one and phase three is under design and soon to be out to bid, along with a couple of other projects that are related to getting the water out into the system. And last but not least, as Director Sigdel mentioned, our Butterfield Water Treatment Plant is very old and while the technology there is fantastic and we have the best tasting water in our region, we do have to upgrade this to modern standards. And so we've got a facility plan that is at the Department of Health for review and approval and once we get that approval, we will be looking at phasing this project and building parts of it out as we go along.
So just a couple of closing comments. So years ago, and Rebecca Francic is online, I noticed, um, and she would be able to confirm that, uh, council went through every project in the CIP. So we tried to give you not even the best, uh, the greatest hits, we gave you the best of. So, give you the highlights. Uh, but I will say it, uh, and we went through it pretty quickly, but we, uh, at some point, we're talking about eight-hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars, but, uh, represents a large amount of work, uh, from the departments, from the council and the boards and the commissions to start with, but our department, uh, staff. And it's a pretty all, pretty much an all-hands effort. It's directors and managers and engineers and planners and folks like that, all the way down to, uh, our admins who work very hard trying to make sense of this and get it in a format that works with finance. Uh, but most specifically finance, our finance director and, uh, finance man-manager Buckley, um, and their staff just did a great job of putting all this together and, uh, and as I, as I mentioned, we've been kinda working to perfect the document as we go. Uh, obviously still has some to go, but we're light years from where we were six, seven years ago or even three or four years ago. So very, uh, very pleased with this outcome and we hope to be back, uh, with council on the sixth, talk a little bit more about it. Uh, and that gives you a couple of weeks to feel free to contact us, uh, the directors or myself or Deputy City Manager, if you have, uh, specific questions on specific, uh, projects or or even just overall thought process. So, thank you. We'll take any questions.
Any questions from council? Councilman Campos.
No questions, comments. I just wanna thank Director Worley for doing a great job. You really did a great job, Director Worley. Everybody else did okay. Uh, no, but a couple of your co-, I actually might take you up on the three-thirty. I would maybe like to see that girder. I've got a hard hat. You just tell me where to be and I might be there, so.
Down there, right where they're staging to put the girders on.
Okay, um, and then. I think, yeah. Oh, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, right there. No, uh, so, silly me. So I just wanted to voice, you know, ten-year-old me is super excited 'cause growing up in the nineties, I used to ride my bike over the Sylvester Street Overpass all the time and you know, they made cars a lot narrower then. I think Mitsubishi screwed us up with the wider is better concept, so I'm glad I, I'm not risking my life anymore riding my bike across there and, uh, glad you guys are taking measures to get that going. Outside of that, um, look forward to supporting staff and, uh, helping the community work through this in the future. Uh, understand plans are dynamic and they could change and I appreciate the work you guys do in trying to capture, you know, changes and then our, our change order process and RFPs and all that stuff. It feels very involved from a council member standpoint and I appreciate the work you guys do with outreach, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Campos. Mayor Perdama Loney.
Thank you, and I'll certainly echo that, the compliments and go-going through this, uh, not the ones for Worley, but in general for the, for all the work that goes into putting this together. Um, I do have two questions. Uh, one's a structural question and then one's, um, I guess a quest, uh, a observation then an ask. So, um, first question is, so structurally, how do I interpret the, the items listed under CED as separate from the other road and other projects? Are those ones that we would expect that developers typically would, would, would need to put in as they build out the developments or I, I didn't understand the delineation?
Uh, yes, uh, very good catch. That's something that we are actually working with ClearGov to be able to have more flexibility. Uh, how the structure works for them is essentially department and then we have, uh, some customizations that we can do as in buildings and facilities, roadways, things like that. When you get into the budget, they, uh, very much view the budgets as department, um, effort and hence you see CED or Public Works and, and departments that essentially, um, should not make sense to people outside of the organization in some manner. Um, the reason that you see CED, um, mostly is, uh, external partnerships because our CED department does the long-range planning. Uh, and then at some point that is passed over to our Public Works that, that actually completes the projects. And so CED is mostly our external partnerships and maybe some of the longer-range planning projects. Uh, there might be a couple of them, some of the overpasses that were submitted by our staff in the CED department and hence you see that we are, uh, asking for ClearGov for more flexibility around which we can hide that because it does create confusion, um, clearly.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I'm not sure I added much clarity, but I understand why it's there. Thank you. Uh, the other one is an observation. So I, I noticed that the, the Harris Road Overpass, that was, that was the first time I've heard of this. I was looking at this packet and this, this information tonight. I know we just, um, approved a master plan, a transportation master plan and some others. Um, so that was new to me and so, um, not that I have an issue with it, just, um, uh, it, it could make some sense. I just, uh, was surprised. And I'll add my ask on then, then turn it over to staff. Um, on this list, um, I would love a subset of projects that have not been included in a previously adopted master plan or other document. Um, 'cause items that we've already approved in a master plan, well, obviously I expect them to see them in the budget when they're appropriate, but that's, that's, that makes perfect sense to me. But an item like this where I haven't seen it before, um, I, I, I want, I just wanna understand what the, what, what has changed since our approved master plans, um, and when we're talking about approving a, a very large budget increase. So that, that's, that's I guess my ask, if that makes sense. Um, but happy to receive any feedback on that.
Yes, uh, that project is another one of those that came out of the Broadmoor Access Revision Report and the traffic analysis that was done for that, not only with the Road seventy-six, but the idea was that, uh, a Harris Road Overpass over I-one-eighty-two connecting Harris Road to Chapel Hill Boulevard would also do very similar to what the Road seventy-six Overpass would do and that is to take a lot of the local trips, especially from the north Broadmoor area and get it to the residential area on the other side of I-one-eighty-two. And, uh, the WashDOT and FHWA that helped with the ARR agreed that if that's something that would be available, they would support that as well. DOT and, and, or WashDOT and FHWA really like the idea of keeping local trips on local roads and save the regional facilities for regional trips as much as possible. So that'll be further explored in the future.
Thank you, and, and I assume it's because, uh, the Court Street, um, going underneath the bridge is not gonna have the correct capacity and right location for, for that to work out. I certainly wouldn't wanna, um, ruin everyone's day that drives through there normally by putting a whole lot of traffic on them. So I, I think that makes sense as well to make sure that we're not distributing a lot of those homeowners around there too.
Or they'll go through the Broadmoor Interchange as well.
Yeah, so I, I would appreciate any of that balance of things that we haven't seen before in a master plan. Like I said, once we've approved it, I'd, um, uh, I know things change, but as long as they're functionally the same project, I'm, I don't have, you know, if, if we already approved it once, I don't wanna prove, I don't have to worry about it twice. Thanks.
City Manager, did you have a question or comment?
Uh, Director Worley captured it. We, we just have a lot more inform-, when we close the door on new information, the, the, uh, Transportation System Master Plan, we were still working on the Broadmoor Plan and the enter-, not, you know, you, the inter-, it is the information grows, it just, you just get more things out of it, so.
Perfect, thank you. Any further questions? Uh, Councilman Mill.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also wanna say thank you to the staff for such a good, uh, CIP. I did wanna say that, uh, hopefully as we move forward, I know, like, the roundabout on sixty-eight is a a great, uh, thing that I look forward to seeing and I'd also recommend with high gas prices that I see more people riding bikes or at least since I ride a bike, I seem to know it's other people riding bikes. But I will say hopefully we could have like more of the, uh, lights pick up motorcycles 'cause there's umpteen times that I'm out of light and it does not pick me up, especially like on Road thirty-four heading north to Court. You could turn left and that light will never hit you unless a car comes up behind. Um, so I'm just saying it would be nice moving long-term if you have more people using more economical transportation that, uh, at least the light picks them up because sometimes then you decide after you've waited so long just to go through the light and take your chance and, uh, I don't wanna get hit, but again, I don't wanna be at a light for three cycles either and, and it never picked me up, so. But I do really recommend the staff for such a good report, so thank you.
Perfect. Thank you again, uh, staff. It was a great presentation, very thorough. Uh, you kept it short. Thank you. Thank you, Director Worley.
Yeah, I just wanna echo that, but I also wanna give a special shout-out to Recha. Thank you for your time here at City Hall. You know, you've been a treasure to work with and you've, you and your staff done a tremendous job. You will be sorely missed, so, you know, since your name's attached to this, uh, I'll give you your kudos now, but thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Director Sigdel. And, uh, next item here, actually, we have a need for executive session. Uh, however, we will be taking a five-minute break before that executive session. Uh, we will be in executive session for ten minutes. Uh, discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero-one, sorry, LI.
Madam Mayor, if you could just announce the time that we will return from executive session, that'd be great.
So it is eight forty-three. We'll be, we will be taking a five-minute break, so eight forty-eight. We'll be coming back at, uh, nine o'clock.
Members of council, you may recall that the latest Pasco Comprehensive Plan was adopted last June. And in an effort to keep the plan up to date, state law through the Washington State Growth Management Act allows the city to amend the Comprehensive Plan once per year unless there's an emergency situation regarding budget, et cetera. So the city has an established process that allows for the proposed amendments to be considered. Council actually adopted this new process in 2021. And it also includes a newly developed application and procedures guideline that we use with our applicants to help them throughout the process. In total, there were eighteen applications submitted. Twelve of them were private, private applications. Six of them were by the city. I'd note that we have not actually entertained or processed an amendment since 2016, and part of that's because we were updating our planning effort on the comp plan, which may justify why there's so many applications on this cycle. The application window was open from December first through May second of this year. It's important to note that the amendment process has two critical components. The first one, which we start with the Planning Commission early this spring, was establishing the annual docket of the items to be evaluated. So which of these proposals do we want to move forward with evaluating? And then part two, the second part, is the result of that evaluation and the final recommendation of the proposed items. So each of these items requires their own set of public hearings and recommendations from Pasco Planning Commission and City Council. While somewhat lengthy, the process is intended to be comprehensive due to the fact that essentially the Comprehensive Plan is a significant policy document. The annual amendment process allows the community to update our plan, to keep it up to date, and to reflect local needs. And however, it's important to, and a requirement by state law, that we consider all the applications concurrently. And we consider the cumulative effect of the various proposals so a decision can be made appropriately. You'll notice in Exhibit B, there's a chart of a summary of the proposed land use changes in terms of land uses shifting from one to another. Additionally, the review of the, tonight's presentation, I'm sorry, is intended just to provide council with the brief summary of the proposed amendments and a description of the process itself. As mentioned, the proposal should be considered concurrently. And the five main criteria that we will come back to council with at a public hearing in September are: is there sufficient time for council to make an informed decision? Will the city be able to conduct sufficient analysis to develop policy and related development regulations if necessary? Has a proposed amendment been previously rejected for consideration? And will the amendment implement and comply with the adopted Comprehensive Plan of the City of Pasco and the Washington State Growth Management, Growth Management Act? And is the proposed amendment better addressed through another planning process? City staff has advertised for a public hearing for Tuesday, September sixth. We expect that public hearing to accommodate a significant amount of public comment. The June public hearing in front of the Planning Commission was close to two hours or so on the Comprehensive Plan items by itself. At that meeting, staff will provide council with additional information on each proposal, including all the public comments that have been submitted up to the Planning Commission and up to City Council. I think off the top of my head, we've received close to seventy phone calls. I've responded to about half of them and spoke with individuals, half of those individuals personally. And will provide any additional information we can to assist council with developing an appropriate recommendation. Following that recommendation, applications will be evaluated and then brought back to the Planning Commission and council for the final recommendation to be considered for the 2022 amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. So I wanted to provide council with a brief summary of the process. Exhibit A lists all of the applications that have been submitted on the eighteen total. One has been withdrawn, and will provide the criteria information for each at the September sixth public hearing. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation and happy to answer anything I can this evening.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick reminder, because I wanted to kind of piggyback off what Mr. Gonzalez had said earlier, that this is a very multi-step process that we'll go through. And I want to clarify that at this point, the only thing that council is doing is setting the docket. Then this goes back to the Planning Commission where they receive after staff involvement, spending a lot of time on each of the proposals. Then they go forward analyzing those. And then the Planning Commission makes a recommendation based on that work, and then those come back to council. But I just wanted to clarify that at this point, the only thing that Planning Commission has to do is make a recommendation, and that's based on to go on to the docket. But the council is in no way bound by those recommendations. The recommendation could be either for or against, or if it, in certain cases, if there's a tie vote and there was no recommendation. So at this point, though, council will be setting the docket based on what the council believes they want the staff to move forward to consider. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. With that, any further questions or comments?
I think just to clarify, because we have had, or I've had some inquiries, there was one particular issue that was a three-three note tie vote. In that instance, as I read our code, and that's PMC Pasco Municipal Code twenty-five-one, twenty-five, zero-two-zero subsection ten, it does look like there's, you know, the two primary alternatives, if I understand, in A and B are the commission provides a yes and a recommendation, a no, that the council should not adopt. And then there's the third option, which is C, Charlie, which is the proposal, if it's unable to take either of those actions, meaning there's no vote at all, or there's a tie vote, that we're looking at a recommendation to council, or a proposal still sent to council. So by process, we're supposed to see, under PMC twenty-five-two-one-five-oh-two-oh, we're still supposed to see this at this point. And then to your point, there's a further step, as we noted for a hearing, it sounds like two weeks out, because we've got a fifth week, and then anyway, the way our scheduling falls. So ultimately, at this point, what's been sent to us was appropriate because there was a vote. Now, the question of whether or not the process was a little bit messed up is a separate question, but by code, this is how, what we're supposed to be seeing.
Well, I would, I would just clarify, though. Section ten really is, we're not even there yet. And because that's when the Planning Commission makes an actual recommendation based on the open record hearing of the proposal. This hasn't even gotten to that point. So this is just the docket to, for the staff to be able to know what resources they need to move forward to even start that process that would eventually involve step ten, or excuse me, code provision ten that you're referring to. So at this point, there really is just a recommendation, whether it should be included on the docket, and that recommendation would either be to include it on the docket, to not include it on the docket, or in cases of a tie vote, no recommendation. And that's where we're at now. We haven't even, we're not even to that point where we could even use that level of detail like it is in step ten.
Okay, thank you.
On that note, any questions or comments? Mr. Gonzalez, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. It looks like it's moving forward to a Tuesday, September sixth, 2022, public hearing. With that, we'll move on to item E, discussion Tri-Cities Animal Shelter Right-of-Way Vacation by Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. And as you just mentioned, this involves vacation for the animal shelter right-of-way construction project. It's located at Washington and Eighteenth, just south of A Street. These rights of way were dedicated very long ago, over a hundred years ago. And even though that great amount of time has passed, obviously, half of them are underwater, but they've never been improved. The request that will be coming to council at the next regular meeting would be to set September nineteenth as the public hearing date to consider this proposal, in line with our municipal code regarding vacations.
My agenda's not clicking. Any questions or comments from our council? Hearing no questions or comments, we move forward. Item F, resolution process water use facility work acceleration agreement with Burnham SEV Director Worley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Before we begin tonight, I would like to introduce a couple of folks here from Burnham SEV, Walker Dimig and Alicia Kruger are both from Burnham SEV. And they are here to answer any of the tough questions you might have that I can't answer. So with that, what I'd like to do is bring, we have some new council members, or a new council member. And so some of this information, we have provided to council before. So for Councilmember Brown's benefit, I thought I would just real quickly go through just a quick, quick overview of what this is. So as most of you know, and Councilmember Brown, we will be giving you a tour here shortly on all of this, so I look forward to that. This is the PWF service area map. It shows the two areas in circles that are the processors that we serve with our facility. And their wastewater from their plants go up to our reuse facility. We pre-treat it, and then we put it on to what is shown there as city-owned farm circles or farm fields. And if you can see where it says Foster Wells Service Area, up at the top left, the circle underneath the word Foster is the Dairy Gold site. Okay? So just for order of reference. So next slide, please. We've shown this as the current site, as you will see when we go on it. But down in the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see the new IPS, and these are the storage ponds that are there. Next slide, please. This is a graphic that we prepared previously and shared with council, and we've shared with others. But these are the six processors that pump, on the left, that pump their stuff up to our pretreatment facility. We partially treat it. We put it on to the fields for final treatment and disposal. And then that provides us lease revenue for the leasing of the fields that we put the water on for irrigation. And the growers get revenue from selling the crops or using the crops for their own needs. And some of the revenue from that goes into our Economic Development Fund. The rest of it goes to the operations and maintenance of the farm facility. And the next slide will show what the proposed improvement for the pretreatment system's going to be. We're basically going to bring all of the wastewater into a new headworks and screening area. We're going to remove the grit and dispose of it. We're going to bring all of the wastewater into a low-rate anaerobic digester. And that's going to sit in there for about seven days. It's going to treat the water. That treatment is going to produce methane, which is going to be captured by a cover on the digester. And it'll go over to a process that will clean the methane and produce renewable natural gas that will then be added to the natural gas system. And then we also will take the waste from that low-rate anaerobic digester and put it through a nitrogen removal process, and then put the water back on the fields for irrigation. So we can get into details later if you would like. Next slide, please. There's been a lot of work done on this process so far. These are some of the schematics that have been developed. These are the latest ones. And so a lot, a lot of work has been done getting us to this point. Now, I circled the two boxes on the right. Remember, in my previous presentation, I said those four boxes to keep an eye on, because we're going to come back to those? Well, this is that. And so those four boxes have been reduced down to two boxes based on the latest and greatest information that we have. And that's part of what you'll see tonight. The next slide, please. That system that takes nitrogen out, we are considering another system. It's called an algae nitrogen removal system instead of SBR or a sequential batch reactor. This is another method that is used for nitrogen removal. It's a little bit cleaner method. And we presented this to the processors last week, Thursday. We had our monthly processor meeting. We presented this. Most of the processors thought that this would be a good alternative to the previous nitrogen removal proposal. And so we are looking to continue pursuing this a little bit. And so let's go to the next slide. So the item tonight is for a work acceleration agreement with Burnham SEV. Because of the amount of work that Burnham has been doing in order to keep the process going, we felt it would be important to let them know that we are committed to moving forward with this process. Now, as you, council may recall, Burnham SEV was the selected RNG consultant that we, that was selected through the RFP process. And there's been a lot of work since then. We feel it important to let them know we're committed. So the agreement you have before you is a kind of what I have been calling a walk-away agreement, which basically says, if the city decides to just walk away from everything that's going on, we agree to reimburse Burnham SEV for the costs that they've developed so far, up to a cap of one million dollars. And so that's basically saying, look, we're committed to this. And what this does for them is it helps them go pursue financing for this project. Without some kind of commitment from the city, then they have no way of ensuring that they're going to get reimbursed for anything. Now, we presented this information to the processors last week, Thursday, as well, along with the new algae treatment. And I asked the question to the processors, would you processors be willing to increase the one million walk-away amount to two million? And you'll see that in your agenda report. I've noted it as a change. And the reason for that is to allow the algae folks, the Gross Wind Technologies Company who design, who builds these systems, whether or not we could bring them in as well and pay their preliminary costs if we decide to walk away. And the processors had until today to let me know if they disagreed with that. We had conversations at the meeting on Thursday, after the meeting on Thursday. And I feel comfortable in saying that the majority of processors agreed that this looks like the process that they would like to go to. So I believe we have support for increasing this walk-away agreement to include Gross Wind and the algae technology process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and we can bring it back next week, or two weeks from today for approval.
Thank you for that presentation, very quick one. Any questions or comments from our council?
Oh, by the way, we have a video of what some of this might look like, just in relativity to the existing facility. And so hopefully, this works. John, our technical guru, is going to show this for us. This was presented at our meeting on Thursday. And so here you see the existing ponds on the right, and on the left, the two big rectangles there, those are the representations of the anaerobic digesters, the low-rate anaerobic digesters. They're covered because you want to capture the methane that is produced by the treatment of the water that's in it. So go ahead, John. So you can see the other little area that is just north, we're looking north right now, is the proposed algae treatment system. What that does is it's a series of greenhouses and a series of rotating belts that rotate through the wastewater and pulls the nitrogen out of the water by using it as feed for the algae. And so it's a very different way of removing algae, but it appears to be very effective. And so we wanted to be able, I think they wanted to be able to show what the scale of their system is compared to the rest of the process. Not only that, we're building, we would propose to build in additional opportunities to grow that facility, to add more units, should processors want to increase their flow or to add another processor, and we could still have enough room to remove additional nitrogen. And again, the reason we do that is because we're limited on the number of fields that we have to put the irrigation water, and we're limited how much nitrogen we can put on those fields. So with that, I'll be happy to answer the easy questions, and Walker and Alicia can answer the hard ones.
Thank you for that. Questions or comments? Mayor Bertamaloni.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I do think that we, you know, we want to, I'm glad we're seeing that we're exploring some options to make this whole facility stretch further and be more effective. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is there a sticking point in the negotiations at this point in time? Like what, or is it just simply that the real, the real crux here is that we need to get work, some of the work done in advance if we're going to stay on schedule to meet our need-by-date?
There's, there's several things going on at the same time. There's not a sticking point, per se. Right now, we have a draft wastewater treatment agreement that we have been developed, that we are now working between us and Burnham SEV. We are also taking that agreement and converting it into an agreement between us and the processors. So that some of what we're agreeing to Burnham SEV in terms of treating the wastewater, we're going to transfer over to the processors, and they're going to pay us, we're going to pay them. So we don't have enough time to get through all of that before some commitment is needed in order for Burnham SEV to acquire the financing that's necessary to keep the project going and on schedule. And we are working very hard to keep the project on schedule, because we are committed to try to be ready for when Dairy Gold comes online. I've had discussions with Dairy Gold today. They are revisiting their schedule, and so we're working in tandem with them. There's a lot of parties going on right now, but we all seem to be moving in the same direction now. This is just kind of a preemptive agreement, just to say, we're committed, if we walk away, we'll pay your bill for you.
So the one thing I would add to that, I'll stay out of Steve's reach, because he may take a swing at me here, but I do want to remind, so kind of just zoom out a little bit and kind of refocus the legal framework of where we're at. This is a, this whole project is under RCW seventy-one forty A, or seventy-eight-one forty, excuse me, and that's a separate and distinct Water Pollution Control Act. That gives us the ability to go through this process. There's, there's still some steps left, and it's very statutory in nature. So we still need to get the agreement finalized. It's got to be reviewed by ecology. It's got to come back. We have to go through a potential appeal process. So there's still quite a few steps to go on that. The good, that's the bad news. The good news is, is that we get to really have a lot more autonomy or choice about who we want to build the facility and design and construct it. So that's, that's the benefits to it. It is a longer process. So this, the need for this agreement really stems from the idea that that process is still a ways away, and that a lot of this work is happening already. And there is no, the thing that this agreement really does is make sure that there is no preconceived idea that that, that second agreement has been entered into. It hasn't. So this really, while it does, it is an expense, obviously, that the city would be taking. It also is clear that this is all that we're committed to right this, at this moment. So just wanted to clarify kind of where we're at on the legal landscape, but we still got a little ways to go on the other part.
I appreciate that. Again, because at the end of, what I'm, what I'm kind of wondering is how risky is the advanced work, right? Like, how likely are we to be out two million dollars because we get to a spot? And if I'm hearing that, we don't think there's any particular legal hurdles that are, that are wearing their head there, like that one right there is going to be a really sticky wicket. And technically, we seem to be down the right path. The users of the facility are in the onboard. It sounds like the, the risk is relatively low from that perspective. Will we know by October seventeenth of 2022? Because that's the other date that we're seeing here.
These are the schedules that we have prepared in order to try to keep everything on, on schedule. There are some dates that Burnham SEV is trying to meet with some of the financing that they have. And so we presented the schedule to the processors. They're reviewing draft agreements as of last Thursday or Friday. And so we are pushing to keep everything going. We will be coming back to council with those agreements once we pass them through legal and get ecology approval on them. Ecology is very aware of what we're doing. As a matter of fact, we've been in contact with them today. They have started the review of the facility plan that we submitted to them. And this proposal for the algae is going to them as an addendum to the facility plan. They're already aware of it. They know it's coming. They actually support the idea. They think it's great. So we're, there's a lot of fingers going on here, and we'll still work our way through the process, and it's going to be fairly fast.
All right, appreciate that. And my final question is, we've seen that the procurement chain is all messed up, as we, you've indicated earlier, procurement of any long-lead items. Is there anything like that, that from a technical and construction perspective that we're anticipating, or?
There are.
We're not there yet?
And by the fact that Burnham SEV is kind of the designer and the builder for the project, and we're just kind of entering into, we will be entering in a contract for them to just treat our wastewater, they're in charge of the whole thing. And so they'll be working with their suppliers, their contractors, their designers, and they'll also be working with the people who are doing the algae. There's a lot of coordination going on, and everybody, I think, is of the mind that if there are going to be long-lead items, let's go ahead and get those ordered as quick as we can to try to reduce that, any kind of delay, just like what we're doing on our projects.
All right, appreciate that. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you for that. Councilman Compos.
I just want to touch on that. So case in point, like variable speed drives, I've got like a thirty-week lead time on some of those. And I think to the point, the whole reason why we're having this discussion is having a million-dollar, basically, show of goodwill allows them to go out and get those without any hang-up in our schedule that we intend to keep. So that's great. Director Worley, could you refresh my memory? What was the original concept instead of the algae nitrogen fixer?
Remember the presentation I did a while ago, and I tried to explain the process for de-nitrification and nitrification.
The aerator thing.
The aerated. It replaces that.
That's great. It's good to use, because essentially, right, your algae is going to take the nitrogen and use it for photosynthesis and all that stuff, and crow, and then basically, you probably wind up reusing the algae somewhere else.
Correct. And I can do a whole presentation on that later if we want, but yes, the algae itself ends up being a product. They turn it into fertilizer.
Cool.
That can be used on agricultural fields. We're also looking at partnering with PNNL as a possible source for.
Grants and stuff.
For aviation fuel, biofuels.
Cool. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I know the answers. I just want to clarify, you know, in the past, there's been like different smells coming from the facility. This isn't going to create a new smell that we're going to hear about, correct? I mean, it's all.
I am going to bring a jar of algae to you and show you how sweet those algae smells is going to be fantastic.
Okay. I'll take your word for them.
Your, your point is well taken, and everybody knows that we are dealing with odor, or we had been dealing with an odor issue. And so one of the recommendations that Burnham SEV had was, let's reach out specifically to the folks that brought the jars of whatever to you, and we're going to chat with them about what's being proposed and how it's going to be better than it was, than what we have now. And so I think that's a very proactive way of doing it, and I appreciate Burnham SEV being willing to do that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Any further questions or comments? I guess we didn't have any questions for you, but thank you again, Director Worley. So we move on to our next item on the agenda, item G. I promised only two more items. Resolution Amendment to I-182 Broadmore Interchange Improvement Contract with DKS for Final Design. Director Worley.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor and council. As I mentioned earlier tonight as part of the CIP presentation, this is the amendment to the contract with DKS for the actual final design of the eastbound loop ramp and roundabout ramp terminal project. We entered into a contract to get through the ARR process and get FHWA and Washdow approval. We amended that contract with a preliminary design. It was a little bit at risk, because we thought we were going to, we knew what the solution was. That risk paid off. We're a little bit ahead of schedule because of it. And now we're just coming forward with the last, hopefully, last amendment to the contract for the final design and get it out to bid probably the early part of next year, for construction next year.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to go over each seven work elements individually and in detail. So, okay, maybe not. We'll do it later.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Worley? No comments. So we move on to our next item on the agenda and our last item on the agenda. Six resolutions, project acceptance for Burns Road Pathway Phase One through Phase Three, Road, North Road Ninety-three, Powerline Pathway, Maple Drive, Water Main, and Sinage and Stripping Burton Boulevard Projects. Director Worley.
As council is aware, we come to council each time we have one of our publicly bid projects completed, final, and to get final acceptance from council. And so tonight, we have four, five, six projects that we'd like to just show real quickly. The first one, as you're all aware, the Burns Road Pathway, we did phases one, two, and three as a single bid, and the bids came in well. We were able to do all three of those phases, along with the powerline road pathway, which connected to it. And so the bid was awarded at five-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and the final construction cost came in at four-hundred-and-ninety-one. So there were no change orders to the project, and the project went very well. If John wants to just flip through the photos, there's pictures of before. I think most of you know what that looked like. There are pictures of it during, there's before, before, during, 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 still during, and after. So here's what the pathway looks like. I think most of you have probably been out there. I think it's been well-received by the neighborhood, the schools, the kids. It's just, it was a great project, and the council deserves a lot of. And the council deserves a lot of credit for, uh, getting, approving that and allowing it to move forward. So, so that's that one. Uh, we added the crosswalk to the schools. So that was good. More pictures. And I think that's the last one. The next project is the water main replacement on Maple Drive. We had a old, uh, asphalt, concrete, uh, asbestos concrete pipe that needed to be replaced. And so we did that. We bid the project at three twenty-five, three hundred twenty-five thousand. Final construction came in at two hundred and seventy-two thousand. No change orders on the project, a very small project. Uh, we can go through the, uh, photos again. This is what it looked like before, during, during, and after. Not a whole lot to see on that project, but it was a much needed project because it was one of those water lines that required a lot of repair time from our crews. So the last project is the signage and striping on Road sixty-eight in Burton. Uh, this was one of three projects that was attempting to reduce some of the congestion at Road sixty-eight in Burton. And one of them was the Wrigley Drive Extension, which you all may recall. Uh, this one was awarded, uh, at ninety-five thousand. On this one, you will see that there were several change orders that we, uh, were able to do. The biggest one was, uh, change order number one. And that was after we designed the project, we realized it would be better to, uh, eliminate the left turn pocket at Clemente. Uh, we've had a high, uh, accident crash rate there. And with the improvements we were proposing, it, we felt it to, better to take it out. When we designed to take it out, they didn't realize that the, the slope of the roadway was different in that left turn pocket. And when we took it out and moved it into the lane that now turns left onto Road sixty-eight southbound, uh, the drainage went the wrong way. And so we had to take some, uh, asphalt out, reshape it, get the water to go to the right way with the movement of the curb. And so that's what most of those change orders, uh, were for, was to address that removal of the left turn pocket. So we ended up with a hundred ninety-three thousand in, uh, total cost. And then we've got some pictures as well. Before, during, during. And after. Any questions?
Thank you for that. Those are fun projects. Um, especially the one on Burns Road. Um, I, we did get a lot of calls, a lot of videos of, uh, the initial excitement out there without these, um, um, safer routes to school. So I'm glad these are up and I do hope to hear back positive feedback from the community. Councilwoman Roach.
I'd just like to pay some compliments for that Burns Road. And, um, yeah, I might have to go and door knock and solicit for those positive comments because we heard quite a bit about the, what was not working. So just wanted to compliment staff on getting that done and doing it in such a nice way. Um, definitely have been personally witnessing, um, kids, runners, cyclists, all using that pathway. Um, and then the last was photo of Road sixty-eight in Burton. That has been so helpful.
Oh, good.
Um, personally. So I like it. Um, not sure. I haven't taken a poll of, uh, others. But I'll let them speak for themselves.
That project initially started out where the signage wasn't up yet because we had some delays getting the signs. And so it was a little confusing for people. We did the striping on the road, but the signs made all the difference. People knew ahead of time which lane to be in because we changed it. The other comment I'd make is the, uh, water line replacement and the Burns Road pathway were all designed in-house. So kudos to Maria's CIP engineering staff for that.
Thank you for that. Mayor, um. We'll go with Councilman Campos.
I just was going to point out, it seems real convenient that you decided to take all the accolades when Maria's not here. For months now. Just, she is on a well-deserved vacation this week, so.
Mayor Verter Maloney.
Yeah, just really, really quick. Um, last time I was through that intersection at, uh, sixty-eight and, um, um, oh my gosh. Burton, thank you. Um, the road quality is poor in spots. Um, and with all the patching and different work we've done, um, is that part of our pavement preservation projects that will be doing that? Or is there going to be, need to be a separate repaving project at some point in time in that? Because I don't see anything on our CIP.
It is on our, uh, pavement preservation program. I would have to go back and look to see where it falls in terms of what year we would plan to, to address it. But yes, we had all of the streets in the city scanned and rated, scored. And so it's in there. I just don't know where it is off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Good. I just wanted to make sure it was captured somewhere because I, I didn't see it in the CIP. So it's not big enough or specific enough that we're trying, that we need to do a complete re-ho- overhaul of that where we would rise the CIP level. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. But, and we have been out there doing some, uh, interim maintenance work as well. As a matter of fact, one day I was out there and I'm like, holy cow, this improvement doesn't work. We were just backed up like crazy. Get around the corner. Our guys had one of the lanes blocked because they were filling potholes.
I think you might have been right in front of me or right behind me on that day. Thanks.
They do a good job, though.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we move on with our agenda, uh, to item six, miscellaneous discussion. City manager.
Just a few items. Uh, uh, Mayor Veras, uh, received, uh, a, uh, letter today from the, um, uh, state historic preservation officer, Allison Brooks. And, uh, alerting us that Morningstar Baptist Church has been listed on the Washington Heritage Register uh, in recognition of their unique contributions to Washington's heritage. As part of that, uh, uh, they also reported that nomination, along with accompanying, uh, documentation, the black experience in Pasco, Washington, has also been sent to the keeper of the National Register in Washington DC with the request that the property be listed in the National Register of Historic Places. That's a pretty neat thing. We all knew a little bit about that. And there was, uh, a ceremony in this chamber, just a couple of weeks ago. But it was, it was great to see something from Allison. Allison and I went to graduate school. But, uh, great to see something from Allison, uh, come across today. And then also wanted to note, uh, uh, Citizens Academy, uh, starting up on September sixth. Uh, so if you didn't want to come to the council meeting and talk about CIP again, uh, it's nine weeks, six PM to nine PM. So get that plug out there. And then, um, oh gee whiz, I wanted to, to note, uh, this is the last meeting for Director Sigdel as the finance director. Uh, and I say as a finance director because she's agreed to work with us on a handful of projects. Uh, so we might see glimpses of her from time to time over the next several months, but, uh, for the most part, she's leaving us. Uh, Recha, in her time here, has completely changed the finance department and city finances. And we saw evidence, CIP tonight, uh, budget, any number of different things. Uh, a lot of the, a lot of dashboards, a lot of the, uh, software that we've seen, uh, get integrated, uh, into our daily routines and, and accessible to the public, uh, has been in large part because of Recha. Um, finance, uh, I want to mention finance when Recha got here had just become its own department. So actually Recha's, she's our first city finance director. Which, uh, you know, you look at her, you wouldn't think she was that old, but, uh, but, uh, yeah, prior, prior to coming to Recha, uh, just a couple of things. I, I don't, I don't want to roast her, but, uh, although that one was very spontaneous, by the way. But, uh, prior to coming to Pasco, Recha had never worked for a municipality. She had no experience whatsoever in municipal accounting. Um, matter of fact, I interviewed her four times, you know, because it was quite a risk. But, uh, we all got to watch her grow professionally and the entire organization has benefited, uh, and the community from, uh, that growth and experience. And I'll say that I, I worked with probably more than a dozen finance directors in my career and Recha's far and away the best I've worked with. Uh, she's, but she's more than a finance director. She's a good friend, too. But, uh, while we'll miss her because she's as good as she is, uh, she can be pretty fun to hang around, especially when she's after someone else. And, uh, but she, seriousness, uh, she's built a very, very strong department. And, uh, so we'll miss her. We'll miss her as a friend. We'll miss her as a colleague, uh, a professional. But, uh, she leaves behind a great legacy in, in her department. And I have every confidence finance departments can operate just fine without her. And that, that's, I know that's a goal Recha had and it's probably one of the most important ones she's achieved, particularly since she's leaving us so early. So with that, I know Recha probably might want to say a word or two.
Thank you. That, that is the best compliment. And I do remember all of those four interviews with Dave. And, um, knowing full well that it, the experiment might not last more than six months or, um, for six years. And I, um, really appreciate, uh, the space to make mistakes. Um, especially as I'm in the council, council chambers. Um, I always felt that I could come to this council with what I thought were right ideas. Um, and I felt that you would listen to them and you would ask meaningful questions. Um, and, um, and give good feedback and always support us. And usually what I've found in municipal government is sometimes status quo is very easy. Uh, because when you make a change, there's a, there's a risk. Um, and that risk sometime, when things are going well, you don't really hear anything. But when things are a little bit bad, you usually hear, uh, from our constituents. And I respect and recognize that. And I understand that my ideas might have added a lot of risk um, to Dave and, and to council. And the fact that you still allowed me to go ahead with it. Um, I, I greatly appreciate that opportunity. I learned a lot. Um, technical stuff, you know, you can, you can pick up anything if you work hard enough. But I've really learned a lot about myself in this experience and I greatly appreciate that. I will also say Darcy Buckley, who's our finance manager, she, um, was hired on maybe three, four months after. And, um, there's, uh, Darcy Buckley and there's Lynn Cowor, who, uh, started right after. And those two people were key to me actually lasting six months. Uh, and, um, with that, we've been able to build a really good department who is very passionate about what they do. And they really care, which sometimes is hard to deal with for other departments. But you do want that in the regulatory, uh, environment that we're in. And, um, and I actually am happy about leaving, um, because I know that the department will go on to do, um, really great things. And we still have a lot of work to do. Um, but I have full faith that they are actually better at continuing on and making, um, and taking those next steps. Uh, and they have more strengths in that area than I do. And that makes me feel really good um, about, uh, completing, um, my mission here, um, and, and leaving the department in a good spot. And, but also in the process, just learning a lot technically, uh, but more so about myself. So thank you for the opportunity. It's been really great.
Director Sigdel, we are very sad to see you go. You have, uh, outdone yourself in your reports. I, for one, appreciate how thorough they are, how complete, um, and how easy it is to read them a lot of times. Um, I do wish you good luck, um, in whatever you do. Just, uh, keep in touch with Dave, keep in touch with council. Um, and I'm happy that you are still doing some projects for us. Um, appreciate that very much. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Verter Maloney.
Thank you. I'll just say, just briefly, obviously I've played a number of compliments on how well the information is presented to us and brought to us and all the different reporting. Amazing. But I think part of the thing, the human element, um, and how much you and your department take care of the people of Pasco is something that's easy to forget. Um, utility shut offs, um, are virtually non-existent in the city of Pasco anymore. If I understand correctly, if I'm not missing something here, we don't shut people's water off anymore. I mean, that little thing is huge. It's, 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 and it's, it's because of direct engagement. It's because of, uh, of, of caring about the humans behind the bills and behind the city. And in so, so many ways, that sort of thing, um, has changed, changed what the city does and how it's perceived in ways that are just, cannot be measured in any other way. So in addition to all the other good things I can say and have said, and will probably continue to say, um, that sort of effort, I think, um, shows the heart you have for the people of, of Pasco. And thank you for that.
Councilwoman Roach.
I just want to echo what's already been said and say thank you for your dedication to the city of Pasco and your hard work. Um, the fact that you leave behind a well-rounded department speaks, um, highly of your leadership skills and also of your legacy to us and to the city staff, your, your peers, uh, and your directors. You absolutely will be sorely missed. Um, and I think, uh, Mr. Zabel is wise to contract you as a consultant further from here. Um, when you're done with that, I would love to recruit you for my board of directors uh, in my personal organization as we have a big gap in finance. Thank you.
Councilman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Recha, I've already shared, you know, our, our moment tonight. So I'll do you a solid and I'll take a stab at Dave for throwing a couple of barbs at you. Allison Brooks here, she's a PhD, Dave. She, I just want to point that out. And also it sounded like there was maybe just a touch resentment in your voice that Recha's getting out of here before you do. So it sounded maybe like you're just a touch jealous. That's all.
There would be some resentment, but like I say, she left a really strong team in place. So it's more, more I'll miss her than that.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilman Millen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And Recha, I just want to say thank you. Uh, I'm not really great at speeches, but I do want to say thank you. And I really appreciate, uh, how you made all the reports easy for somebody that's really not into all the finance things when it comes to the city. But, uh, made it to where I could understand and know where you're going, where I didn't have to question you because you just seem like this honest kind of person and it kind of flows out of you that what you say is believable. And when you read it, it looks just like facts. So I just wanted to say thank you for everything and I will miss you as well. Thank you.
Thank you again, Recha.
Okay, I'll go.
All right.
Not good at those, I'm a little sentimental, but just from the last few meetings, um, you have a wonderful aura about you. Um, that's very welcoming. Um, so that speaks well of a great leader. Um, invitation is very important when you're in a new dynamic and when everything just looks so different to you. Um, you have a very inviting spirit about yourself. So I wish you all the best, um, in all that you do. Um, just check on us every now and then. Um, looks like you are very, very well needed and you're going to be very missed. But I didn't get to know you like these guys did, but I'll tell you what you present is very authentic and I appreciate, um, just getting that little bit. So whoever gets you next, they're going to be excited to have you. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I definitely will be watching the council meetings. It will take me a little bit to wean off and figure out what I'm going to do with my Monday nights.
Also, uh, I will take a stab and probably outbid Zara on the job offer. All right. Well, with that, um, thank you everyone for, um, again, a great meeting. Uh, Recha, we're going to miss you tremendously. So we move on to our next item on the agenda, executive session. We do have need for one more executive session. Um, and this is qualifications of an applicant candidate for appointment to elective office per RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero LH. And we will be taking fifteen. And we will be taking fifteen. Go ahead. It is now ten sixteen and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. Have a good evening.